For the afternoon of September 14th, 2021. If you're able to rise, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Paula Escobar, who was recently named finalist for the Youth Poet Laureate for Santa Clara County. And Councilmember Arenas will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Paula Escobar as a youth commissioner. She's also, like you mentioned, a home laureate. So she is unable to join us today because she is currently in school. But she did send us a video to share with everyone. She's a dedicated youth leader in District Eight who's inspired by her mother and her older sister to promote inclusivity and create positive change in her community. She's an advocate for educational justice and wants all students to feel empowered to lead. Paula serves as Secretary of the Eastside Union High School District Student Governing Board, serves as a Santa Clara County Juvenile Justice Commissioner, and like I mentioned earlier, our very own District Eight Youth Commissioner. She's one of the 10 finalists for the Santa Clara County Youth Poet Laureate Program this year. With her poetry, Paula wants to carry out the values that inspire her and channel out her words of empowerment. Paula's goal is to attend law school and become a civil rights lawyer to help protect the rights of youth of color. I'm so proud and honored to have Paula leading our invocation today. She's going to be joining us virtually and sharing her poetry titled "Homes." And it speaks about her roots in Bolivia and now in San Jose. So thank you, Paula, for sharing your written word with us. And I'm so proud of the young woman that you are today. I look forward to seeing you, all that you accomplish.
Hello, everyone. My name is Paula Escobar, and I'm currently a high school senior here in San Jose. I was previously selected as a Youth Poet Laureate finalist for Santa Clara County. I'll be reciting one of my poems to you all today entitled "Homes" for the invocation. With lukewarm soup and bold yucca, the feltty touch of newspaper, and brick walls hugging the streets, Guaterbamba is our home. Defined by rugged mountains and high altitudes, grandpa sitting pridefully across the table, he spoke of his plants and the titty-faming photos that lined the walls. With his fancy pants and dainty glasses, the cold crisp air reminded us of where we were and where we came from. The comfort of home brought memories and, above all, hearts. Thousands of miles away, I look back at home. My home right now is not Bolivia, but instead San Jose. But sometimes I feel lost in my second home. I'm not the only one with these deep-rooted insecurities. We all long to not only be present, but to be at peace here. Sometimes it feels like the wind pushes us back a little too hard, but we need to keep watering the seeds planted by those before us. Our families and histories carry forward resilience, demonstrate immeasurable strength, represent diligence, and show that change is possible. I'm always growing. I'm always coming back to my first home. It's where knowledge has been passed down to me. Right now, my roots extend beyond San Jose, but my community is settled here. Carrying change because of embracing ourselves, our identities, and our individual capacity, wherever our home may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula, for your words. All right, we are on to ceremonial items. We'll start with Councilmember Carrasco and anyone who'd like to join us at the podium to recognize and celebrate September 16th as Mexican Independence Day.
I'd like to invite Robert and Cassidy to join us from our regional medical facility on the east side of San Jose. Well, good afternoon, everybody. What a pleasure to be here in person. I'm Magdalena Carrasco, and I represent District Five, the east side of San Jose, the beautiful east side of San Jose. Tomorrow is the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month. Celebrated from September 15th through October 15th, National Hispanic Heritage Month is a time designated to honor the histories, the cultures, and the contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to U.S. society. While icons like civil rights leaders Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta immediately come to mind alongside Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, astrologe Walter Mercado, and household names of Selena, let us not forget our very own Tigres del Norte. I also want to take this time to recognize five, actually four, and the fifth one, but four amazing Latino leaders here in the city of San Jose. Actually, it's five because Mayor's descendancy is traced all the way back to my favorite state, Guanajuato, after Durango. But to be able to stand here and recognize the five Latinos that represent the 10th-largest city in the U.S., I want to make clear, we're not voted in because of the color of our skin or because our last name is Mexicano, but it's because we represent individuals who have otherwise been left behind and have not had a seat at the table. As we welcome National Hispanic Heritage Month, I felt it necessary and correct to express my gratitude to the Regional Medical Center frontline team who ensured that our east-side Latino community made it through the brunt of the COVID-19 pandemic. They faced a staggering 4,374 COVID-19 cases. As you know, the east side was especially devastated by the pandemic and for many reasons, but mainly due to previous policies that have left our community in a vulnerable position. Policies that have effectively scared our Latino community from reaching out for health care services. And to this, add to this that much of our Latino community works two, maybe even three jobs, often live in closed, multifamily, multi-generational homes that put them at an inherently greater risk of contracting the virus. You've got a recipe for disaster. Fortunately, the regional medical frontline team had the equipment necessary to respond and shed light on such inequities. So today, on the eve of National Hispanic Heritage Month, we would like to recognize the incredible Latino staff. I want to be clear, the entire staff at Regional Medical Hospital did a fantastic job, continues to. But I want to recognize the Latino staff for all of their selfless hard work and dedication to our east-side community. We recognize the Latino custodial staff who maintained the facilities, who cleaned, who changed laundry, and were attentive to the needs of all. We want to recognize those Latino translators who delivered good and heartbreaking news. To Latino nurses, technicians, and the doctors that worked on godly hours to serve the needs of patients. And we want to recognize the Latino administrators and directors who found courage to lead and keep the institution running smoothly. It is because of your service that we are able to safely convene here today. Your service ensured that our San Jose Latino community, most of which calls my district their home, was able to persevere through the COVID-19 pandemic. It is because of your service that we are able to celebrate this coming Thursday the 200th year of Mexican independence. I'd like to add by saying that taking your health into your own hands is one of the best ways to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month. Latinos currently make up a little under half of all COVID cases in our county, 48.4%. While only accounting for 25% of the population, I encourage everyone to get fully vaccinated as it remains the best and most effective tool in preventing the spread and impacts of COVID-19. I'm vaccinated. My pollitos are vaccinated. My team is fully vaccinated. Please, help us round out the low vaccination rate for Latinos by getting one. This Thursday is the Mexican flag raising in honor of Mexican Independence Day. The five Latinos that you see behind me, as well as myself, will be co-hosting, and we hope to have an enjoyable celebration. And with that, I want to ask Mayor Licardo if you would, and my council colleagues, if you would please present this commendation to Robert Arajo, Director of Physicians and Provider Relations for Regional Medical Hospital, and Cassidy Wilson, also from the Regional Medical, is here as well.
Well, I just want to say thank you to the council members, Councilmember Carrasco, Mayor Licardo, for this recognition. And I accept this award on behalf of the frontline staff, health care workers, nurses, and physicians at Regional Medical Center. And we're honored to serve our community, and we look forward to providing high-quality health care in the future. So, thank you.
All right, next up, Councilmember Foley. I believe we are celebrating, perhaps commemorating World Alzheimer's Day? World Alzheimer's Month. Sorry, I'm very forgetful.
Nice joke. Mayor, not quite, not on World Alzheimer's Day. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Pam Foley. I represent District Nine. Today is my privilege to proclaim World Alzheimer's Awareness Month. This takes place every September and is the international campaign from Alzheimer's Disease International that leads up to the 21st of September, which is World Alzheimer's Day. As the liaison to the senior commission, I can tell you that it is incredibly important to shine a light on this debilitating disease and all those that has impacted whenever we can. Together, we must educate and challenge misconceptions about dementia, including that it not only affects older adults, and raise awareness of the work Alzheimer's associations around the world help to eradicate and address this disease. We've been working with the Alzheimer's Association of Northern California and Northern Nevada on this proclamation, and their work is particularly important and timely as their work involves hosting programming for those especially hard-hit-to-reach communities. With this proclamation, we are lifting up their programs for diverse communities, including programs in Spanish, Mandarin, Cantonese, and Vietnamese, and programs designed specifically for the Black and LGBT communities. I always knew that Alzheimer's was an international disease. My mother had dementia when she passed. But what I didn't know was the specifics of how it might have impacted one population more than another. Please allow me the opportunity to share with you some of the information that I have learned. Black Americans are twice as likely as whites, and Hispanics are one and a half times as likely as non-Hispanic whites to develop Alzheimer's or related dementia, and more likely to have a misdiagnosis. Those are incredible facts. Today, we have with us Stella De La Peña, who has recently, was recently promoted to as the Alzheimer Association's newest Director of Diversity and Inclusion. Stella will accept the proclamation and share with us some information about the disparities we see with Alzheimer's and about how they're working to combat those disparities.
Good afternoon, council members and Councilman Foley. Thank you so much. My name is Stella De La Peña. I'm the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for the Alzheimer's Association. And it is a great honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the association and to thank the council for your continued leadership and support and shining a light on Alzheimer's and dementia. Currently, more than 650,000 people in California are living with Alzheimer's disease, and over 1.6 million family and friends are providing care to their loved ones. As you know, there are profound ethno-racial disparities in Alzheimer's prevalence, diagnosis, and care. Black Americans are twice as likely as whites, and Hispanics are one and a half times as likely as non-Hispanic whites to develop Alzheimer's or related dementia, and more likely to have missed a diagnosis. Knowledge, concern, and stigma about Alzheimer's varies widely across racial and ethnic groups. And national surveys reveal that non-white racial, ethnic populations expect and experience more barriers when accessing dementia care, have less trust in medical research, and are less confident that they have access to health professionals who understand their ethnic and racial background and experiences. To address these challenges, the Alzheimer's Association provides a wide range of programs and services in English, Spanish, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese to help those impacted by Alzheimer's and dementia with education, caregiving training, care planning, and management and supportive services. We also provide programs and services designed for Black Americans and LGBT communities. And we advocate for policy change at the health system, state, and national levels. We are grateful for the council's leadership on Alzheimer's and stand ready to partner in any way possible to eliminate disparities and expand access to information, care, and support for the city's diverse communities. Thank you so much.
All right, as Councilmember Arenas is making her way down, I'd ask members of the community to join us up here to recognize September 6th this year as Jaswant Singh Khala Day. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Sylvia Arenas, Councilmember to District Eight, which covers Evergreen and a portion of the east side. And I'm honored to be here with you today to honor the memory of a man who protected human rights of all people. His name was Jaswant Singh Khala, whom many have seen him as a martyr. Jaswant Singh Khala was a human rights activist and Sikh community leader, born in Punjab, India in 1952. The Sikh American community has always been a great partner, not only to District Eight, but to the greater city, especially during times of crisis. I value my relationship with the Sikh American community and admire their commitment to public service, to community, social justice, and human rights. Jaswant Singh Khala began on a mission to highlight the plight of men who had disappeared after his colleagues had been arrested by police and never heard of from again. His work was instrumental in the Supreme Court of India and created the National Human Rights Commission to investigate widespread allegations of human rights violations. He led the campaign against human rights abuse in Punjab and believed that all people had the right to dignity and that no one should fear being falsely imprisoned. Twenty-six years ago, on September 6, 1995, Jaswant Singh Khala died after being abducted from his home. The day of his passing is observed annually by the Sikh American and South Asian communities and is a day of remembrance. In San Jose, we celebrate our diversity, and we have a thriving Sikh American community which includes the San Jose Sikh Godwada Sahib located in District Eight, which is the largest, I always love to say, it's the largest outside of the Golden Temple in India. District Eight is also home to the family of Jaswant Singh Khala, and it is the legacy of people like him that remind us to be brave in our efforts against injustice. And it is my honor to recognize September 6th as Jaswant Singh Khala Day in the city of San Jose. His legacy and importance of his work lives on today through his daughter Navka Iran Khaur, who is a San Jose resident and our Sikh American community. I would like to invite Navka Iran to say, and her, your husband is here, and your father-in-law is here, and Sikdev is here as well. So I'd like to just welcome all of them and ask them to say a few words.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilmember Arenas and the city of San Jose for recognizing September 6th in remembrance of my father. My father is known for his work on the disappearances that happened in Punjab from 1984 till 1995. He eventually became one of the disappeared. And I'm thankful to the city because I've been working in the Silicon Valley. I came to U.S. in 2009 and graduated as an electrical engineer and now working here in a silicon company. So it really feels good. We feel appreciated when the place where you now call as your home also recognizes things that your family has done in back home. So I'm really grateful to the city of San Jose for recognizing my father. Thank you.
All right, on orders of the day. I believe there is a notice from our city manager that will be dropping 9.1. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the current agenda other than the adjournment, which we'll discuss in a moment? Oh, thank you. Perhaps Nora could have.
Mayor, item 3.4 was to be amended. And one of the recommendations, there was a supplemental memo that came out after rules, so under our sunshine ordinance, to amend the recommendation will require a three-fourths vote. You can take that vote now, under orders of the day, and then vote on the item itself when it comes up at 3.4.
Okay, so I guess I'd ask the maker of the motion to incorporate that amend, acceptance of the amended 3.4 as part of orders of the day?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the orders of the day amending item 3.4 and dropping 9.1.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Sparsa. All right, Councilwoman Menes has some words to offer to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Rebecca Boylan, who's the former director of philanthropy at the YMCA. Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was, obviously, news of her passing was very surprising, but thought it was important to just say a few words. And joining us in her honor are Rebecca's dear friends and colleagues. One is Julie Griswold-Sahota, Director of Customer Service for the YMCA of Silicon Valley, and a good friend of mine, who's also Eileen Humbert, a board member of the South Valley Family YMCA. I suspect if they're not in the chamber, they're probably online watching. It has been said that we all have a gift in life, and it was evident to those that knew Rebecca that her gift was to give a voice for the voiceless. Rebecca started her journey with the YMCA as a selfless volunteer. In 1997, she joined the Southwest YMCA's Day Camp team, where she was passionate about working with teens, specifically teens who needed an advocate. She was intentional in her relationship building. She let every dismissal or inappropriate reaction slide off her back and dug her heels in more to connect with folks. She not only built relationships she liked likely, it's thought that it’s thought that she helped save lives. Rebecca is a graduate of San Jose State University, and she continued her employment with the Y on and off until 2008, when she joined the South Valley Family YMCA as the Director of Philanthropy and Administration. Now, titles didn’t mean anything to Rebecca, and you can find her with her sleeves rolled up in pretty much every facet of the Y. She was a champion of the people. She truly wanted to help people the best they can, to be the best they can. She pushed hard, expected excellence, and challenged herself to support beyond measure. The South Valley Y thrived in meeting and exceeding fundraising goals under her leadership, and I know that I was the recipient of some of those calls on occasion, as were some of us up here. She was unapologetic and challenging the Y and the larger community to do more. And she would remind us all that youth deserve access and have, and we have a responsibility to them. Her infectious leadership would grow to be the culture of the Y, and as a result, Rebecca leaves behind a legacy that will be imprinted for years to come. Generations of kids have come back to express appreciation or start their own journey at the Y because of Rebecca’s efforts. There is a palpable difference without her, a footprint no one can fill. We will honor her memory by continuing to do the best we can. It’s what she expects of us. And I can tell you that when I first took office, I got appointed in, I think it was early December, because Councilmember Kalra went up to the State Assembly. But one of my first interactions with people in the community was with Rebecca. She was working with the Y, and I believe it’s the Rotary Club of Elmah Dunn Valley, I believe. And they were helping to provide their annual Christmas lunch to the seniors at the South Side Community Center, which is in my district. And that’s when I first met her. And her giving spirit was evident then, and so sorry for her loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, we will then take a vote on the orders of the day.
It passed unanimously?
I’m sorry, Tony?
It passed unanimously.
Oh, it did, thank you, Tony. All right, so that passed. We’ll move on then to closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. There is nothing to report out of closed session today.
All right, on to the consent calendar. Are there items to be pulled? I’d like to pull item 2.7, the A&amp;A non-signatory agreement with the airport, and then item 2.14. Are there any other items to pull? Okay. John, thanks for coming down in anticipation. I just had one question for you because obviously with some concern that A&amp;A has chosen to be non-signatory. Does this suggest or pretend anything about service on that flight to Tokyo?
I’m sorry, I didn’t.
What does, yeah, I’m just trying to understand what we should interpret from this decision of A&amp;A in terms of the likelihood of continued service on that route to Tokyo.
Yes, Mayor, Council, John Aiken, Director of Aviation. A&amp;A’s normal cost for operating at the airport just to have their office space and everything is about $375,000 a year. And so knowing that Japan is far behind us in opening up their economy and opening up their country, they wanted to save money in the meantime. They’re still committed to San Jose. The sales office is still down here. The staff still talks with us. And in this adjustment we’re doing here, I put in an incentive of if they start the flight back by next summer, that they would get half of the fees back that they pay us as kind of that enticement to do it. A&amp;A is still struggling even at SFO to put more than 15% load factor on their flights. And it’s mostly because Japan is just very, very tightly locked down. So I think once the country opens up, A&amp;A is still very focused on San Jose and the connection. But they just have a ways to go before it really happens.
Thank you, John, and thank you for your efforts to continue to continue that important relationship. And then finally, I ask, are there any questions on that item before I move on? Okay. Item 2.14, the Destination Home Grants. I want to thank Destination Home for their $540,000 pass grant, which we used to accelerate affordable housing production on 14 ELI-supported projects. That’s certainly important. And also for their commitment for the next three years. The question I had, and thank you, Michael and Chris, for writing for this one. Do we have some ambitious target or goals in terms of what we can do with these resources now to further accelerate the process for either ELI or affordable production?
I’m sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah, I’m sorry if the mask isn’t helping. Given that we know something about the effort that we’ve engaged in over the last three years with this funding, do we have some specific goals around acceleration of the process now that we have these resources locked in for another three years with the help of Destination Home, about how we can increase the speed of our ability to process development of housing for our formerly homeless residents?
Sure, so yeah, there’s not a goal in the grant agreement in terms of timeline, but we’ve talked internally this morning. And I think what we think would be a good goal to establish would be that 50% of the ministerial projects be completed within six months and that another 25% within nine months. And then there’s others that may take longer just because there’s a lot, there still are inexperienced developers out there. So that’s something that we, so that’s the goal, I think we feel that we’ve kind of would put forward as something we can strive for. We think it’s very doable.
Okay.
It is a bit of a dance, right? So there’s two dancers in the dance. There’s the developer and there’s the applicant. So this is kind of a goal for both parties in a way.
When you say there’s a developer and the applicant, forgive me?
All right, the developer and the planning staff.
Oh, I got it, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah.
It was becoming a complicated dance. Okay. Thank you. I think that’s helpful. It’s just helpful for us to know that we’re continuing to strive to improve how we’re able to get affordable housing built for most vulnerable residents. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, we should go to the public?
Alex Schor?
Good afternoon, City Council. This is Alex Schor, Executive Director with Catalyzed SV. Put in a public comment through eComment earlier today. I happened to echo Mayor Liccardo’s question and comments. We’re supportive of this goal of, and want to thank Destination Home for working to help the city get affordable and especially permanent supportive housing through the approval process quicker and as quick as possible. And so thank you so much. And we’re so grateful for the planning department for that. Want to echo the mayor’s question or request if we can, see if we can drop those 11 months that the staff talked about in their report down even further. And so thank you, Michael Brio, for addressing that with the goals that you talked about. Those seem like really good goals, and it would be great if the city could in fact do those. So thank you, city staff. Thank you, Mayor Liccardo. And thank you, Destination Home, for working to get as much affordable housing built as quickly as we can in our community. Catalyzed SV believes deeply in community engagement on development projects, but we know community engagement doesn’t have to take long, and it doesn’t have to be overly complex. And so we know that these projects are high priority for our city and want to see them built with some community engagement and input, but also knowing that we have to balance that with getting them built as soon as possible to get people out of our streets and creeks and into their permanent homes. So thank you all.
Ray Branson?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Ray Branson, Chief Operating Officer with Destination Home. I just wanted to thank the city and council for their continued partnership on this supportive housing planer. When we made this grant three years ago, we knew that we had a lot of developments that were going to be serving our most vulnerable people, and we needed to get them approved and entitled as quickly as possible through the city. With the great work of city staff, we were able to reduce application processing time by 20%, cutting two months off. While that might not seem like a little, that’s two months less that people have to live on the streets. So we want to keep this work going. Thank you, Mayor, for encouraging the continued work and striving to reduce the time to process in the months and years ahead. It’s worth remembering that it’s not just the dance of the applicant and planning staff, but public works, fire, building, lots of different city departments collaborating. So we want to continue to see that collaboration and do everything we can to get this desperately needed housing built for our neighbors. Thank you very much. We look forward to the partnership ahead.
Thank you. Okay, order of business, which I’d like you to restart the clock. But when it goes off, sometimes we’re not hearing your meeting. And the meeting needs to stop when the virtual meeting is not receiving the audio, okay? That’s important, okay? So deal with that and get that straightened out. The meeting should stop if we’re not hearing it. And so the issue that I’m dealing with, one, I’m responding to our memorial for this beautiful Rebecca woman. I looked her up and how young she was. She was gorgeous and young. And, you know, and most of all, I was trying to find out. She must have died from cancer, you know? We know that. And this is what’s going on in our neighborhoods, you know? And I was realizing today, when in terms of our foundation, is the right to life, that’s our natural right. And I’ve been saying it, natural right is for clean air. And we don’t have it. And we’re disabled, I’m disabled, my husband is disabled, my son is disabled, because we’re living in a polluted neighborhood, okay? And many of my neighbors have died from cancer. And yet, it goes on, business as usual. And when the IPCC says that in order to stay between 1 and 1.9 degrees C above pre-industrial level, we, in order to stay at that level, we have to stop economic growth and start caring about public health. That is the truth. And you’ve got to listen. And the young people are depressed. They’re depressed because nothing is changing, and you’re causing it. You’re causing it. They’re seeing no change, and they’re depressed. And I’m depressed, you know? And so the thing is, we have the truth, which is we have 1 to 1.9, and we’re at 1.2 right now. And look at the damages we’ve experienced right now. Eighteen more inches are coming into Louisiana, eighteen more inches at one time. Okay, so it’s not stopping.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Happy Tuesday. I have a few procedural questions to ask, and I hope the clock time can be put back. I wanted to, I have some public comment to speak on item 2.7. The mayor has once again just blown over public comment and went immediately to 2.14, where I wanted to talk. He’s developed a habit over the past six months that if I try to speak, if someone tries to offer public comment on a singular item pulled, then the mayor then doesn’t ask for public comment on the remaining consent calendar items. He’s been doing this habit for about six months now, and it’s really annoying. He’s no longer asking for public comment in the proper order. Public comment is if you pull an item, you ask for public comment at that time. And after you have public comment, you talk about the rest of the consent calendar items and ask if there’s any public comment there. Now, can I have my time over again and have time for 2.7 to talk about the issues of 2.7 and 2.14? Thank you. I have.
You have time to speak for two minutes on public comment. Are there any?
You are fully aware of what I have just explained and what you are guilty of. Please work on this issue and stop doing this to the public, please. Okay, please. Now, to speak on item 2.14, to give yourselves polite information that you really, really need, basically, that there’s a future of transitional housing programs that are developing subsidy plans to make permanent housing for homeless from transitional to permanent a much easier process. This describes the whole accessibility process of subsidies, how we need to have more open, decent conversations with all parts of the community on these subjects. Please learn to be doing this. This is important stuff for the future of the Bay Area.
Back to council.
Thank you. Returning to council. Just on that last item, 2.14, I did want to thank Ruth Cueto in particular. I know she’s been serving in the role of helping to expedite these projects. And we regret that she had to leave our office to go to planning to do that, but I’m glad that she’s doing great work. All right, any other comments or questions? Let’s vote on the motion from Councilmember Sparza.
Tony, Tony, my computer is off, so my vote is a yes.
Okay, the vote is unanimous?
Thank you. And Tony, I’ll note, I’m having a problem with the Zoom link, so I may not see when people are raising their hand in the public, so feel free to jump in if I miss it. All right, on to the report of the city manager. Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have two items in my report today. First, I would like to remind and invite our mayor, city council, residents, and businesses to participate in this Sunday’s September 19 ViveCalle San Jose event. ViveCalle transforms miles of streets into the city’s largest park for the day, from the Mexican Heritage Plaza in East San Jose to the Shasta Handicap Park neighborhood in central San Jose. Everyone is invited to walk, bike, skate, or just join on the fun this coming Sunday. Next, last week, President Biden released his Path Out of the Pandemic Action Plan, consisting of implementing a six-pronged, comprehensive national strategy that employs a science-based approach to successfully combat COVID-19 and all of its variants. The plan aims to use every available tool to combat COVID-19 and save more lives in the months ahead while also keeping schools open and safe and protecting our economy from lockdowns and damage. I’d like to turn it now over to Sarah Zarate from the city manager’s office to provide additional high-level details of the plan. Sarah?
Thank you, Jennifer. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. My name is Sarah Zarate, Director of the Office of Administration, Policy, and Intergovernmental Relations. Late last week, President Biden released his COVID-19 Action Plan that seeks to drive higher levels of COVID-19 vaccination in order to decrease hospitalizations and deaths from COVID and keep schools and the economy open. The plan is organized around six prongs. First, getting more people vaccinated. Two, preparing for boosters. Three, keeping kids safe and in school. Four, increasing testing and masking. Five, protecting the economy. And six, strengthening our surge response. Vaccination is, of course, the linchpin for so many other actions. Local, national, and global recovery are all dependent on it. Within this prong, the Department of Labor’s Occupational Safety and Health Administration, known as OSHA, is developing a rule that will require all employers with 100 or more employees to ensure that their workforce is fully vaccinated or require any workers who remain unvaccinated to produce a negative test result on at least a weekly basis before coming to work. This is a major mandate that is expected to impact over 80 million workers in the private sector. Unfortunately, there are no additional details available related to either a timeline or implementation. However, at a webinar hosted by the White House and the Department of Labor yesterday, participants were told that OSHA is working as expeditiously as possible to issue an emergency temporary standard with a compliance timeline. And importantly, this expeditious process will not contemplate public input. Additionally, within this prong, there are federal employee mandates requiring vaccination of all federal workers and contractors, with exemptions for people with disabilities or those who decline for religious reasons, as well as a requirement to provide paid time off for employees to get vaccinated, to recover from vaccination. Strengthening the protection of those that are vaccinated is also of primary concern. In the plan, the president stated- In the plan, the president states that the administration is preparing for boosters as early as next week, although implementation is very much dependent and subject to the authorization or approval by the FDA and recommendation from the CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. Although additional details have not been released, officials have stated that boosters will be free, are likely to be recommended eight months after an individual's second dose, and will be widely available across 80,000 locations from doctors' offices to health centers. As we can recall, knowing where to get a vaccine was a confusing experience for most of us in early 2021. Even if you did know where to go, it wasn't clear when there would be vaccine availability. Boosters are being handled very differently. To streamline information for boosters, once approved, individuals will be able to find a vaccination site at vaccines.gov. This is a screenshot of what that webpage looks like. This site will not only provide information of where someone can go, but also what vaccines are available, and for many sites, what appointments are open. Importantly, there will also be a toll-free number where people can get information on boosters in over 150 languages. And for anyone who's already texted 438829 or used WhatsApp to get vaccine information, they will automatically receive a text with information on boosters when they are recommended. Within the other prongs, President Biden employs additional approaches to significantly increase access to free and convenient testing, advance the safety of children in schools, and protect economic growth and strengthen the surge response in hospitals. For example, the plan invests in the production of more rapid coronavirus tests, expanding free testing to 10,000 local pharmacies, and sending up to 25 million free at-home rapid tests to 1,400 community health centers and hundreds of food banks. He also announced a deal with Kroger, Walmart, and Amazon to sell tests at cost, resulting in discounts for consumers for the next three months. Biden also called on states to enact vaccine mandates for school staffers, although he did not propose any penalties for states that don't enact mandates. He also plans to make funds available to local schools facing financial retribution for implementing protections. To keep businesses strong, the president announced several programs that would benefit small businesses, including an expansion of the COVID-19 Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. Again, this plan was released late last week, and many of the details pertaining to implementation and compliance deadlines are not yet available. The Intergovernmental Relations Team will work with our federal lobbyists to track additional information as it becomes available. Lastly, unrelated to this plan, our state legislative session came to a close last Friday. We will be coming back to council to summarize important actions taken at the state level. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to the city manager.
So we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Jennifer. Questions from the council? Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, and thank you for that update. I know things are moving quickly on this. I was happy to see the president make his announcement. I have a question, though. I know that the president issued a testing and vaccination mandate, and we're waiting for more information. Do we have any information on the sick leave policy that was paid for by tax credits so that we can incentivize people to not go to work when they have COVID?
Thank you, council member. That was, that sort of level of specificity was not included in the plan, although they did, the, OSHA will be drafting a rule around providing time to get vaccinated or recover from a vaccination.
Thank you. I look forward to getting that information. Thanks. That's it for me, Mayor.
Other comments? Okay. There is no motion, so we'll move on to them. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
Blair Beekman?
Again, offer, the mayor did not offer public comment on item 2.7 and then bunch 2.14 into the remainder of consent calendar to approve of without any public comment. You know, we really, he's developed a new system that's really appalling, that really needs to be talked about, and that, to be clear, what we have to be talking about in the next few weeks and months to clear up. We can't continue to work this way, I feel. Yes, I sure would. I just wanted to make my feelings clear, what we need to be working on with consent calendar. With that said, how we have talked about the early stages of the vaccine process and vaccine passports may be much different than how we can talk about it at the end of this summer and fall. We simply have to continue good efforts in how to have good communication and healing on the subject of vaccines, the spread of COVID, aerosol vaccines, the vaccine passport process, and the future of its surveillance technology, and in how to continue to look for creative, good choices and options of community safety for everyone, as well with these concepts. Three months ago, if I was to type out on a Google search engine to ask about nanotechnology and mRNA vaccine processes, I would not get much of an answer. Now I can. So I hope it can be okay to continue the good efforts to find ways to look and how to talk about the issues of COVID-19 more honestly and openly, and the good definitions of community safety and individual health through this fall. I think the federal level has shown some creative, good thinking, as they have just announced that they will continue the federal government workers can have a choice of a vaccine or weekly COVID test in order to limit and reduce the future spread of COVID. The continued efforts of heart-to-heart dialogue are important. I hope there can be a continued term of Governor Newsom, Mayor LaCardo of San Jose, and Santa Clara County will want to work towards these open, honest, good dialogue and creative safety, safe community practices and options for everyone in the next six months. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Blake. Blair, Blair, I love you, Blair. Yeah, because, you know, this is really critical what Blair is bringing to us, and I'm experiencing it too. Because I was thinking about when Mayor LaCardo says that we couldn't have public comment in the beginning of the meeting. And one of his comments that was listed in the paper was that because we talk about, like, you know, federal government, we'll talk about the federal government, we'll be off task. And so that's why he doesn't want it in the beginning. And I'm thinking, I just heard, when I heard a little bit of what's on your consent calendar about, you know, anyway, it was something to do with, you know, money. Oh, you have a lobbyist. Yeah, you have a lobbyist in the federal government. We know you do. And we know you have lobbyists. Yes, it's very important what's going on in the federal government. And what if we talk about what's happening in the federal government? That's okay. But yet, he doesn't give us our public comment in the beginning. We don't get that because of that. So that's the hypocrisy that we're talking about and the lack of public engagement. And even, you know, you know, even when we say we're not on topic, well, the thing is, the topic that we need to be talking about is our climate crisis. And if we're not talking about it all the time, that's when we get in.
Paul Soto?
Yeah, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Back when Lee Wilcox gave that emergency COVID response, like, a couple of months ago, this was foreseeable. And that's why I had noted at that time, to be sure, that that needed to be advertised on the news, that I remember distinctively saying that, because you can see the incremental buildup. Okay, we're gonna shut down. We are going to shut down. And you're not being honest about it, LaCardo. And I don't hear anybody else on this council checking him. You need to get checked, LaCardo, because this was predictable. What's gonna, okay, now, in this, in this policy, the president assured it's the small businesses, so you, I could see Scott Neeson paralysis jumping up and down with glee, because the small businesses are gonna be protected. But what I would like is a more clear answer to the question the councilwoman Sparza placed to Roslin, because Roslin didn't answer the question. She did not answer the question. She asked specifically whether or not there was gonna be an incentivized payment via tax credits for people that are positive with COVID, and incentivized them not going to work. Roslin's answer was completely off. She did not answer the question. So I would like her to answer that question, and I would like this advertised on the news tonight, tonight, and tell the public that, you know what? Prepare yourselves, because we're going on lockdown, and we're just gonna wipe, where's the, where's the eviction protections? Where are the eviction protections? You're not gonna protect anybody. You would rather have Mexicans all in front of, in St. James Park rallying against it than you would to protect your own people. You're a dictator, LaCardo.
Thank you. All right, on to 3.3, which is, which are actions related to the purchase orders of Citywide Radio Upgrade Assurance Program. There is no presentation? Is there a motion or a comment?
Move to approve.
Second?
Thank you, Councilmember Sparza, second from Councilmember Renas. Is there public comment?
There's public comment. Please stay on the topic. Tessa Woodmansey?
Paul Soto, that Mayor LaCardo is a dictator. Okay? So we have to take that into, this is, what he's saying is that the media isn't covering what we're saying. They never do that, and they need to do that. And what Mayor LaCardo just did to me, which he does routinely, is shut me down and shut my speaker off, instead of saying, Mr. Woodmansey, you need to stay on topic in regards to whatever that is that we were talking about, which was the agenda. And no, really, what we were talking about is a corruption. Okay, yes, right. And so what you do, Mayor LaCardo, that others don't, is you shut us off without letting us come back to answer the way you want us to talk and to connect it for you if you don't understand.
Hi. To try to return to my own normalcy, sorry for raising my voice so much. Hopefully, I can learn to do that in the future without raising my voice. That's the goal. Good luck in also how small practices, if we practice our small practice as well, that can better address larger issues. For this item, you know, there's just been years of practice, learning to practice the ideas of BayRicks, and it's good choices. It offers kind of like good communication for first responders. It's a new system developed, direct communication and secure communication that uses both, the SVIRA uses, you know, both broadband and radio frequency. BayRicks, I think, is specifically towards broadband things. It's a direct, secure channel that I'm hoping that everyday community can learn to be a part of in the time of emergency. A lot of broadband towers will probably be down if there's a serious earthquake or if there's wildfire situations. And to have that sort of emergency line available, a secure line available for everyday community, how that works, I don't know. But to mention it here, so you can be aware of it and to know what to work on, I know there's certain patchwork stuff by Verizon that can help out such a process. But just to make yourselves aware that it's important to have a clear channel for the everyday public in the times of emergency, as well as first responders. How do we work on that? That's why I'm here asking, mentioning. Thanks a lot.
I'm glad we have this, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I'm glad we have this on the agenda, because that, that person over there, Morgan Hill, okay? He climbed, and you know what? We need people like that in the community. Okay? Because this dude, he jammed that radio system. Okay? And when he jammed that, he was able to show the weaknesses and the vulnerabilities in these systems. Okay? And it's not necessarily, you got $11 million being, being, being used for this pipeline for, to create this system that you're referring to. Okay? So it's not just necessarily money. You could throw 20 million, you could throw 30 million at it. You have some 10-year-old kid, you have some 10-year-old kid inside of his computer and just sitting there with his computer, and he'll bust your system. That's, this, it's the arrogance that this city has, that it is, that nothing can mess with it, nothing can play with it, that it's completely untouchable, because we have technology, we have data. You know, none of those things are boss, man, because a 10-year-old kid with a computer can show you just how small you really are. And sometimes, you know what? That needs to be done. It needs to be done. You need to be shown exactly how small you are, so that, you know what? So that you'll sit down and you'll start having some humility. But money isn't gonna solve the problem. What's gonna solve the problem is seeing everybody as an equal. That's what the Declaration of Independence says, that's what the Constitution says, but that is not what this council says. This council says something different. It is, it is them and us is what it's about. The developers, same thing, them and us. So you go, I would suggest you get some people from, like, you know, from Stanford, you get some people from UC Berkeley, you get some people from Santa Clara, and start working on the protections of the vulnerabilities of these systems, because we were just recently shown that, you know what? We're not as strong as you think we are.
Thanks, Mayor. Jennifer, I just want to ask if we know what we're doing with the equipment as it's decommissioned? I know it's a lot of very expensive and useful equipment, and we have a number of local citizen-based emergency response groups, such as CERT-trained groups, RACES, the Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service, and others, AVPSN down in D-10. Just curious if there's any possibility of repurposing that equipment and handing it over to citizen-based emergency response groups?
Walter Lynn from our Public Works Department can answer that. Thank you, Walter.
Great, thank you. Jennifer and Mayor LaCardo and members of the city council, Walter Lynn, Deputy Director of the Public Works Department, Councilmember Mann, great questions. Once we go through the replacement process for the older radio units to the newer replacements, the older radio units can still be serviceable in a way where we can use those for replacement parts of those radios that are still down the timeline for replacements. As this is a 10-year rolling process, we're gonna have a significant amount of radios that aren't going to be replaced in the early years. If there's any maintenance needs for those radios, we can use the ones that are being replaced for spare parts, which are very difficult to come by based on manufacturer technical support and part support. Once parts become obsolete, it's very difficult to get from the manufacturer, so having this as our core stock of replacement inventory would be very helpful for us. We can also reap as the budget is still needed for that.
Thanks. And those all seem like really, you know, obvious and smart uses. If you do sell them, would you consider giving us the opportunity to speak with some of our local committee groups about potentially purchasing those?
Yes. And usually, the sales houses that we use, they are open auction websites, so it's open to the public as well, and they can view, and we provide those details also.
Great, thank you so much.
Walter, while you're here, I might as well throw another question out that came up in my head, which was, you know, since we've moved to this FirstNet system in 2019, does that obviate the need for any of these radios? Or I just assume that all our first responders would be able to have priority communications cellular with that system? Is there a reason why this is more reliable?
Yes, good question, Mayor LaCardo. So the differences between the FirstNet cell phones that we have now available for first responders versus the radios, there's multiple benefits in still continuing with the radio technology. With the FirstNet phones, they are cell phones, so in emergency situations, having to pick up a cell phone, use a hand to dial, and hope that there's coverage, still with the FirstNet, even though there's enhanced coverage, there's still an opportunity where there may not be that cell coverage, and then awaiting for the person on the other line to respond and having that communication. With the radios, it's a one-button feature, which could be hands-free as well if the microphone is affixed on the person's body, and they can use still both hands for the immediate emergency response that they have. The radios are also more rugged in nature as well, and that's why they're all more expensive. A regular cell phone, based on the environments that the public safety and first responders are in, cell phones may not be as durable as these rugged more units. In addition, the cell phone radio towers are not necessarily considered essential infrastructure, and as such, there are no emergency generators necessarily with cell phone towers. If there's a PGE outage, for whatever reason, those cell phone towers may go out. On the other side, our radio towers, we are considering them essential facilities. We do have backup emergency generators for those, so those will continue to run during power outage scenarios. So from the aspect of ease of use and media communications, the radios are a much better feature for those emergency-type response scenarios.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Okay. Let's go to, we've had public comment, so we should vote. Thank you, Walter. I believe we had a motion, didn't we? Yeah?
Tony, I, my screen is off. It's Magdalena over here.
It's unanimous.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Item 3.4 is approval of citywide insurance renewals. Now, we're gonna take two separate motions here. I understand because there's a change in the recommendation, we'll need motion on that item, and we need to approve that by three quarters?
Well, we did it under orders for the day.
Oh, we're done? Oh, we're done?
Yeah.
All right, we're just gonna vote. All right, that's all. Okay, good. There is no presentation on this item. Are there any questions before we go to the public? All right, let's go to the public.
I would like to remind the public that the topic is citywide insurance renewals. Tessa Woodmansey.
Hi, are you ready to hear me? Okay. Okay, so, this is Tessa Woodmansey, and what we're talking about is that we do need to talk only about our climate crisis, and that, and then I get shut off. That's what happens. I get shut off, and I'm off topic. And what we're saying is that if I, if I am off topic, as far as you're concerned, I need you guys to say to me, you're off topic, this is Woodmansey, needs to be on this other issue, and I will connect it to that other issue, okay? And so the thing is, you're not doing that, and you're just shut off. And we're seeing policies of how, how things are being run, and we have a lot of problems. And what I really appreciated is that it was from the, it was from the public that we got to talk about our emergency preparedness from Blair Beekman, okay? And that he talks, okay? And then Matt Mayhem picked it up and said, we need to talk about that, and then we started talking about it.
Tessa, would you like to talk about insurance renewals?
She still has permission to speak.
Okay. Tony, you lost her.
Okay, hold on. Oh, here I am, here I am. I'm here, I'm here. You got me? So what we're having is a lot of problems with insurance because of all the, all the problems we're having with our climate and the fires. And so insurance is, is a real way, they know climate change is happening because they're paying for it. And what we have to start doing is doing the work that the science says for us to do, which is to stay below 1.5 degrees. So we have to keep talking about that continuously, because if we don't, we are going to go in the direction we're going, and a lot of things are wrong, and you need a lot of public comment, and you need to stop, you need to start doing things right and putting public comment in the beginning of the meeting so we know when to come in and talk. Because what it is, is that we do need a revolution, and one of the things that we're discussing in our charter is that if we get like 1,000 people together that can sign something, and, and so then we can override you.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here, to try to relate these insurance issues to natural disaster preparedness practices that we have to be doing in the next few years and decade. Thank you incredibly that, you know, San Jose has been really trying to practice in like its city council and committee meetings, you know, good emergency preparedness ideas. I haven't seen any other Bay Area cities really doing that effort, and thank you, they talk about it, but they don't have actual committee meetings on the subject matter. I haven't seen so much as yet. That may change, so thank you. You were talking in fourth quarter at the budget time in May, you know, you're, you're really concerned what will be our direction in the next few years, and how do we address, you know? I feel it's important that we have to more openly consider as much as we can, you know, are we gonna have an earthquake, say, in the next two years by 2023, or in the next five years, or in the next 10 years? And how we learn to have that sort of open conversation, everyone can be a lot less confused about how to talk about and address the subject. And, you know, it can address the Reed Hillview Airport issues, a number of issues that it just makes it easier if it's awkward, but to learn to have those conversations openly, I think is an important concept. Hopefully I can learn to talk to you more of yourselves about this subject, to learn how to talk about it more openly this fall. And insurance will have a lot to do with how we, how we will be planning these things. So thanks for this item, and thank you.
Paul Soto.
Yes, well, I'd like to thank the city for at least doing this and not doing it under duress, you know, because the city does a lot of, it, it's extended a lot of policy issues under duress, especially something like this. Look at that, look at that list. War risk, war risk, war risk, terrorism, war risk, dismemberment. I mean, what, what are you guys planning? I mean, look at the agenda, man, I mean, like, do you guys like know something that we don't? You know, is, are you anticipating something? You know? Secondly, is, I'd like to thank Blair for the kind of advocacy that he has put forward as a citizen. I am, I am proud and glad that we have a citizen like Blair on these committees, man. And we'd be, I'd be lost without that dude, man, lost, you know? And I think that this city really needs to extend its gratitude for citizens like Blair, because for the past year and a half, he has constantly been advocating that the city prepare itself, that there, that there isn't that language where we can talk about this. Insurance is important, but it really sounds like you're anticipating something, you know, just by the tone and, and the kind of way that the city is moving and, and the kind of like talk and, and, you know, just data, 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 that's all we need, is just data. Data's boss, it's gonna save us. No, it's not, people will. People will. Data won't get you out of a ditch. Data won't put a frickin', a needle in your arm to protect you from COVID. Who will do that? A person. That's what will do that. And never, never underestimate the power of the people and the power of the person. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
No, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. Let's vote on Councilmember Cohen's motion. All right, thank you.
Oh, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Item 3.5 is city manager appointment and compensation. Of course, we have already approved, Jennifer, as our city manager, the compensation package is reflected in the letter attached to the memorandum.
Move approval, second.
Okay, should we go to the public and then come back to questions? Okay, Tony?
As a reminder, this is item 3.5, city manager appointment and compensation. Please keep your comments on that topic. Tessa Woodmansey. Go ahead, Tessa. Tessa?
Yeah, I'm here, but, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, good, I know the topic is her compensation. I'm not happy with the, I don't think she should be compensated as highly as she is because what I found is that when I go to her web, first of all, what was really bad is about the whole thing with the, what they call reimagining safety in our community. And it was hidden in her little, that's where she put it. She put it in under her city manager. That's stupid. That's not good, and now we're gonna pay, she, what she did is she, she's hiding this commission about city, city safety. And that's what I'm saying, do you hear me? And so I'm not happy with that, so I ought to catch that and say, I don't know about your city, you know, safety program, and then I find, I have to go deep into it, it's under city manager. And then they write me back, they say, oh, we're putting it under commissions. Oh, well, that's smart. And even the commission page, you have to jump, jump to something. It was not even user-friendly. So if she's our city manager, you know, I'm not impressed with how available our, our information is. So then, on top of it, in regards to this whole issue of climate crisis, which I can understand, you're gonna cut me off because it's not on the agenda. And the thing is, that's the problem. That's why we need to be able, 1,000 people should be able to override your agenda, because your agenda is business as usual and not thinking about public health. That's why the people are having to bring up, what about emergency? Thank God for that, because that's the issues that we have to be dealing with. But you wanna deal with business as usual, building and growing and economic growth, and that's what the IPCC says we cannot do anymore. We have to think only about public health if we are going to stay below 1.9, okay? And that is the truth, and you're not listening, that's why the kids are depressed, people are, you know, and even the way you're running this mixed beat.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. The compensation that, that the city manager receives is tied to the work performance that they do, okay? So they're, they're related, work performance, what they do as a city manager, and how much money they get for doing that. And I'd like to remind the council that that's my money. It's mine, it belongs to me. I am the city, I am the public. So when I'm here, I represent the public. I didn't say that I represent everybody, what I represent is the public. That's, that's the role I hold here. So the city manager's work performance is a question. Doesn't have to be an agendaized item, because work is tied to compensation. Now, with that said, that letter that was produced, that's work, and this is what I'm paying her for? No. That was, that would, dude, I hope she listens to that meeting, because the way, and you know what? I don't put it solely on her. I know she was put up to that. Somebody told her to write that. It wasn't, it wasn't from her. Someone told her to write that. And so they're interfering with me feeling confident with this money going to her, it's like, who do you work for? What do you, do you work for me? Do you work for the public? Do you work for, no, the city of San Jose? This, this, this ethereal, nebulous entity. No, you don't, you work for me. I'm the public here, okay? And the importance of censoring these policies and respecting the, and I'm not just a part of the public, I'm a part of the very population that has been dogged out the most in this city with absolutely no acknowledgement or recognition for the justice that we have come in.
Lubna Ohsol. I might be saying that incorrectly. Okay, I'm gonna move on to Blair Beekman.
Hi, thank you. I've known Jennifer McGuire since the whole time I've been working in San Jose on these issues, on my issues. She's usually been the city manager at the, at the committee meetings I've been at, and so I'm fairly interested in how she can do as a, as a city manager. She has her real first test with the public at this time about the charter commission issue. I'm hoping that, you know, there can be a negotiated process that can take place in the next few weeks and into early October, and that we don't have to have any final decisions now about her memo, but, but work on the issue. And I think, I think all sides have some interesting points of view, and from words from Tessa, you know, this really can be a shared process, and it's not dictates being handed down by city government, but certainly some good direction and that we can take to heart and, and learn to make adjustments accordingly, and hopefully we can come to some good agreements. Angel Rios has a very good way to negotiate and have dialogue and compromise that he may be of interest for this item, and I think, I hope we can work well to work this out. And the people, the city charter, have some very good ideas of their own, so good luck how we can all work on the issue. Thank you.
Back to council.
Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, I didn't hear, that was back to council.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
It's the masks.
Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, we already voted on it, announced it, I think it's great news. I just had a question that I think it's important to bring out in public, and that is to confirm that the pay that's proposed, that we will, the pay and benefits that we will be hopefully approving shortly is the same as her predecessor, David Sykes, and I think that's important to address publicly.
Thank you. Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge the appointment and selection of Jennifer McGuire several, a few weeks ago, and say that I wholeheartedly support this compensation package, and I will move approval.
Second.
And just to add that I spent a lovely day with Jennifer touring District 9 on Friday, and I, this is the first time I've been asked by someone to come out and, as city staff person, to tour my district, so it was really nice to see it from her point of view and be able to show everything that's going on in the district in the three or four hours that we had together. So I am so grateful for that and appreciate that. Thank you for that and your open line of communication, I am grateful for.
Also want to thank Jennifer for that effort. I know this is a, a job that demands an enormous amount of time, and she's spending even more time committed to really trying to understand the districts that each of you represent, and I appreciate that very much. Councilmember Renas.
Thank you. I also just want to join in and say congratulations, and I'm so proud to have a woman in this position to lead us in this recovery after such terrible pandemic times, and so the perspective you bring from your long years here as a civil service employee, really a public servant, I think is going to just really do our city well, so congratulations.
All right, any other comments? Okay, let's vote then on Councilmember Foley's motion.
Do we want to wait for the person to come from the back, or just? I thought I heard the door, but he's not coming out, so I'm just gonna end it.
Councilmember, okay.
Unanimous.
All right. See if she tours District 2 now. Just joking, just joking. All right, so we're on to, yes, on item 6.1, which is a master consultant agreement with Jacobs and many other, many other consultants for general engineering services for San Jose Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility. There is no presentation on this, so let's go first to comments from members of the public.
Paul Soto.
There was a woman, there was a woman, I can't remember her last name, but her first name was Brenda, and she talked about the lack of public input, there was absolutely no communication as to where those three generators are gonna be, you know? And, and these are engineers that I assume designed them, you know? So, I mean, I, I'd like to know if this city had addressed that, because that never came up as a topic in terms of the city addressing where its placement, the placement of those generators, you know? So I would hope that there would be some type of item that would address those concerns of the citizens in North San Jose, because it is still, it may be north, but it's still San Jose, you know? And so those decisions are made right here, but yet it's like you compartmentalize what you want addressed and what you don't want addressed. And anything that you pass, it's very easy to connect it to another issue, so you can't compartmentalize these types of, these types of events that are going on in the city. Man, you need to be able to appreciate that we are in a paradigm shift of culture, of economics, of infrastructure, a complete paradigm shift to where we're never gonna be, you're not gonna be able to even recognize this city in five years. There's gonna be at least 100,000 people that are gonna be leaving it, leaving it, and that's gonna be hap, that's gonna accelerate within the next year, and then it's gonna continue to progress to five years, and then it's going to settle down, okay? And then there's gonna be another rapid one when all of those buildings get built and those influx of those 400,000 people come here. So these are directly tied to these decisions right here. You have to be able to at least have an appreciation for that and hope, and allow the public to comment on those typical issues that ultimately result from the decisions that happened right here. Thank you.
Tessa Woodmansey.
Oh, great, that's a very good conversation today, because what Paul is bringing to us is that we need to be tangential because we have so many crises. And so when I talk about climate change, you know, and you talk, talk, talk.
We're not being tangential, we're just talking. We're not being tangential, we're just talking myself.
I know, we're talking about waste management, okay? I know, we are talking about waste management, and that my philosophy is, is that the waste management we're doing is wrong. It needs to be everything local, and this is where we need to change. And when we're talking about, what we're talking about, which we do need to keep talking, and that's why when we, last night, we had a charter review, and what we discovered from other charter review from Bob Brownstein is that we need to have 1,000 people to be able to vote and say that what you're talking about is not dealing with an issue that we're having, which is our climate crisis.
We need to speak on the item.
So, okay, so what it is, is in terms, thank you, I appreciate it, because I'll bring it back to waste management, the expense of waste management, the problems of waste management. We do need to go back to the old ways of doing things, which is everything stays on the property and we live at home. That is our, needs to be our philosophy, is living at home, living local, and our waste.
Back to council?
I move to approve the wastewater treatment plan consultant agreements.
Second.
On the motion, Councilmember Cohen, let's vote. All right, item 6.2 are.
I just need to announce real quick, Zoom can't see this screen, so the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Item 6.2 relating to the efforts of the City of San Jose and Santa Clara Valley Water Tour Purified Water Project is the recycling project. I don't believe there's a staff presentation. Vice Mayor, would you like to speak on this, this item? Brought the memo forward.
I'd like to move my memo with Councilmember Jimenez and Cohen.
Second.
Okay, let's, there's a motion from Vice Mayor Jones. Let's go to the public, and I ask that everyone restrict their comments to this item. This is advanced purification, plant expansion.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, thank you. I wanted to try to comment quickly that, you know, I understand that you have some difficulties with Valley Water over the future of the issues, I guess, and they receive the funds. I don't know if subsidies is a correct word, but, so it's made you guys at the city level uncomfortable with the ideas of subsidies and free money being passed along by the federal and state level. I think responsible practices with the features of subsidies is really important, and I hope we, I just, I hope, a reminder that an accessibility of understanding can be available for all of us in these incredibly important issues that we're dealing with, the future of COVID issues and its funding patterns. We have some pretty extraordinary amounts of money now being, that will be offered to the local level that we have to be really responsible about, responsible about, and all that good stuff. The water table issue in San Jose may be a reminder that we're having sea level rise issues, and it's sad, and it's like nothing we can do, but just simply note that at this time, and I'm sad and sorry about that. Good luck how you'll be working on this issue and how we talk about our subsidies and funding at the local level in the future as well. Thank you.
Tessa Woodmansey?
Well, we're talking about wastewater and all the things that we need to deal with survival and basic needs, and that's what Blair is bringing to us, is that we need to be thinking about emergencies, and when you are in, we are in an emergency, you have even declared it a climate emergency, okay? And that's the problem right now, is nobody wants to deal with this. This is why we're bringing it to the charter committee and saying that we need to, we need to have this on every discussion, it needs to be looked at, is what is our, what is the climate impact of what you're doing? Because we have to stay, we have a job to do, and that job is no, that means no further development, that's what it means, no development, all about public health. That's how we stay in the course that the science has told us is somewhat survivable, okay? And we're seeing all the problems, and we, you know, they're talking about staying below 1.9, and that, we're at 1.2 right now, and so, and we're experiencing so much damage, so much emergency, and when Paul says 1,000 people are going to leave or whatever the number is, you know, maybe those are the low income people he's saying are going to be, you know, they won't be home to them, and that could be true. But what we're really talking about in terms of climate crisis, it's a billion people on the move. That's what they're saying because the world is becoming less and less habitable, and so San Jose, we have to start thinking about preparing for a lot of people to come here, and we're not doing that, and we're just building, and we're building willy nilly, and we're not thinking about resiliency. And this is what, when they said, "Public health, public health," to save as many, that's what my husband said last night at the charter review, and that it needs to be in the charter so that you, that I'm not an interruption, because the problem is we have to stop interrupting what you're doing, because what you're doing is the old way, and we have to start finding transformational ways to do things, and that's staying home, a lot of staying home, and a lot of growing food, and living simply and not wasteful, and learning how to live without fossil fuels. We all have got to start doing that.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. All of these projects that you have are with regard to just building up the infrastructure. They're not just like, okay, well, this is pure water, okay, this is wastewater, they have nothing to do with each other, that they are completely separate, they are completely independent, and no, they're not. Okay, you were building up an infrastructure, you could see it, piece by piece. Okay, you got city planners, you got engineers, you got architect, you got all these people together, and they are all working in tangent to make sure, in tandem, to make sure that these things are set in place for that 400,000 people that are coming here. This is what you were preparing for, La Cardo, because you're the one that planned it, you and Peralis. So, you know, in conjunction with Dillaboe and Hayden and Ariaga and all these dudes, okay, and so this is what you said that you needed. You're using COVID money to do it. May I remind you that you are the mayor of a city where 25% of the debts that occurred in this city were on the east side of San Jose. 50% of the infections happened on the east side of San Jose. So that influx of COVID money coming here needs to be prioritized for the citizens on the east side, prioritized, if we're going to talk equity. And you know what? I think they deserve it, considering what we've endured since the 1940s. I think we have that coming. But yet you were using, you're going to be using COVID money and shifting here, oh, well, this is part of the general fund, so we can use this funding for here. No, and this is, these are indications of that, this purified water system, that you want to build this infrastructure, and you're going to, you're going to shift money here and shift money there, and all of that money, the east side was the one that paid for it, man, you need to be reminded of that. That's where that money came from. Thank you.
Back to council?
Thank you. Councilmember Sosa?
Thank you, Mayor. I, first off, I wanted to thank Vice Mayor for his leadership on this. I know that after the hearings that we've had, I really believe that he's trying to lead us to a path where we can work together and end up where we really want to be and work through some of these issues, and so I'm happy to support the motion. I just wanted to ask a question, and I guess I'll ask Vice Mayor, since it's his memo. I just wanted to ensure that, that we would not be limiting time for folks to meet, and I understand there's a facilitator involved, but I'm sure it takes what it takes, and you know, there's, every project goes through its processes, and I just wanted to make sure there was breathing room for that process to really happen.
And thank you for that question, Councilmember, and yes, we will allocate the appropriate amount of time to facilitate and have a successful process, so we're not going to be limited to a finite amount of time. We're going to make sure we dedicate as much time as required to make this, make this happen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and I echo the thanks to Vice Mayor and to the other council members who have stepped up, and we hope that this will get resolved in discussions where they need to get resolved, and that way we won't continue to have to send letters back and forth. Councilmember Renes.
I also wanted to join the chorus of gratitude expressed to Vice Mayor and to Councilmember Jimenez for authoring this, this really path forward to continue to communicate with one another in a way that we can actually hear each other and move forward, and on behalf of my residents, thank you. There's, there's a lot of folks who are hurting, and any increase in, in some of these fees might look small in the larger picture to Valley Water, but they're huge to these families, so thank you and God bless you, Vice Mayor.
Oh, all right. Okay, any other comments? Any other praise for the Vice Mayor? All right. Okay, it's all around. Let's vote.
The vote is unanimous?
All right, that's unanimous. We're on to the land use consent counter. I think there's only one item on consent, is that right? Okay, there's no presentation. Is there a public comment on the consent counter?
Paul Soto?
Okay, Mr. Soto, we're just focusing on the consent item.
I'm focusing on the city. That's what I focus on, Mayor La Cardo. I focus on my city. And considering that I'm a descendant of Sasi Puertas, all these issues impact me, especially land use, especially land use. Okay, because land use has everything to do with redlining, everything to do with it. How, in fact, in fact, that's offensive that you would want to just talk about.
Mr. Soto, we're just beginning the item at 2586 Seaboard Avenue.
It has everything to do with redlining. Mayor La Cardo, challenge me on that. Tell me that it has nothing to do with redlining, and I'll be quiet. I'll be quiet. Go ahead, you, you stand.
Mr. Soto, it's an industrial parcel, there's nobody, Mr. Soto, there's nobody who lives there. It's an industrial parcel. Would you like to speak on the rezoning?
If he puts his hand back up, we can call him again if he wants to speak on it.
I'm sorry?
I put his hand down.
Okay.
So if he wants to speak on it again and stick to the topic at hand.
Yes, Mr. Soto, if you'd like to speak specifically on the special use permit and conforming rezoning, you can do so.
But I'll go ahead and move on to Tessa Woodmansey for now.
Okay.
Oh, thank you so much. Oh, what is it? Now I only get a minute? Oh, you took it, there it is, good. Thank you, sweetheart, too. Thank you for the least amount, that's good. The least of the most, whatever. Anyway, so basically what I'm saying, a land use is very, very critical in how it's decided, and you say, oh, that's industrial rezoned, okay? Well, as you hear the motor near my house on Stockton Avenue, I am on the border of industrial and residential. That's where we bought, because I have been a stay-at-home mother, okay? And we had one salary and we lived here, on Stockton Avenue, and we tried to make it a better place, noise and pollution, very heavy, with no controls from our city. So when, you know, when you say, oh, that's industrial, well, but you know, the thing is, you have not taken care of the industrial, and then you'll move housing here. I mean, you rezoned our property to be residential, and that was the original plan.
Would you like to speak on this proposal for daycare center?
Well, okay, but what I'm saying is that it is very critical where we're zoning and our land use policies and how those go about, and that, you know, basically we have to stop polluting. That's what, what we really have to start doing, and, you know, does this, does this project, is it built without any, you know, a cement which produces CO2? Is this project, you know?
Blair Beekman?
Hi, thank you, and how this is an item for rezoning children issues in North San Jose, rezoning for children's issues in North San Jose. I thought I'd just quickly offer a thank you to all the efforts, I think it's with the Charco Avenue project for the new overpass off-ramps by the school. This is, it's taken some interesting turns, and I think we're being more agreeable that we can have a future of this area that can have pedestrian and bike pathways for its overpass areas instead of cars. Good luck in these continued negotiations, how to address this issue, and thank you for this item.
Paul Soto?
Thank you for the extension of, the extension of speaking again, but I think I've made my point clear to you, La Cardo. I got enough, say. Thank you.
Back, back.
All right, back to council. I'll move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Renes, was that from before? Got it. Okay, let's vote. All right, on to 10.2. This is a special use permit and vesting tentative map for property located northwest corner of South Almeden and Waz Way. There is a presentation, and welcome, Chris and team.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building, Code Enforcement, and we're pleased to bring you our recommendation on this important project, helping fulfill our vision for downtown. I'm joined by some key members of the team to help go through the presentation, Sylvia Doe, David Keon, and Robert Manford, our Deputy Director. And so with that, I'm just going to hand it straight to Sylvia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. This is Sylvia Doe, Planning Division Manager with Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. So this project, let's get this started. There we go. This project consists of a vesting tentative map and a special use permit to merge five lots into one lot and to construct a 16-story 2.05, I apologize, I don't know why it skipped ahead, 2.05 million square foot office building with ground floor amenities and commercial space, alternative parking designs, 15 commercial condominium units, and extended construction The project site is long and linear, and is 3.5 acres in size, located at the northwest corner of Almeden Boulevard and Waz Way in the southern portion of downtown, in between the Guadalupe River and Trail, and the Children's Discovery Museum that's located to the west, and the Convention Center that's located to the east. The site is located just north of the recently approved 20-story Waz Way office towers. The site's general plan and zoning designations are downtown. Just to give you a sense of the existing site conditions, this is an existing fully paved, city-operated parking lot developed by the Redevelopment Agency over 25 years ago. The parking lot's 390 parking spaces are accessible 24 hours a day and has lighting improvements. The site is separated from the Guadalupe River by a 12-foot wide paved Guadalupe River Trail. The riparian tree canopies currently encroach over the paved trail and partially into the project site and its existing parking lot. The project application was submitted in January of 2019, and since then, two community meetings have been held. The first one was a joint community and environmental scoping meeting held in June 2019. The second one was held two years later in June 2021 to provide project status and project design updates to community members. Community meeting and public hearing notices were sent to the owners and tenants of properties within 1,000 feet of the project site and to interested parties and individuals. The major community concern is the project's impact to the riparian corridor. Given that, staff's review of the project's riparian impacts are based on three separate but interrelated policies and regulations, the first of which is that staff evaluated the project's consistency with the City Council's riparian corridor protection and bird safe design policy, which was adopted in August of 2016. Prior to this 2016 City Council policy, there was a 1999 riparian corridor policy study that was never formally adopted by the council as a policy, though it served as a guidance document for riparian project review prior to the 2016 adoption of the council policy. Between the 1999 and 2016, the 2040 general plan was adopted in 2011 that includes policies that strengthened riparian setback requirements and referred back to the 1999 policy study, given the absence of a formal council policy. The general plan also included an action policy for the city to develop a council policy based on the policy study and habitat conservation plan as background, which would recognize 100 feet as a minimum setback, except in a limited number of circumstances. Since the 2016 adoption of the council policy, that document is now the prevailing policy that applies when analyzing riparian projects. that document is now the prevailing policy that applies when analyzing riparian projects. Second, the project's riparian impact is analyzed in the supplemental environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The SEIR includes a biological resources section that analyzes the project's construction and operational impacts to the riparian corridor. Lastly, the project is evaluated under the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Conservation Plan, which was adopted in twenty thirteen. The city is a co-permittee and therefore, as part of the review of certain riparian projects, the city requested a consultation with the Habitat Agency on compliance with all HCP conditions for this project, including an HCP condition regarding riparian setbacks. Ultimately, the city is the entity responsible responsible for implementing the HCP for riparian projects within our jurisdiction. Before getting into the details of the riparian policy review, I would like to briefly describe the existing site conditions and the proposed project in relation to the riparian corridor, which is shown on the bottom portion of the slide. The site is long and narrowly shaped with an approximately eight-hundred-forty-five-foot stretch of the Guadalupe River riparian corridor along the entire western edge. The narrowest portion of the site is approximately one-hundred-and-forty-five feet wide in the middle of the site and the widest portion is approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-four feet wide at the southern edge of the site along Waz Way. As mentioned earlier, the twelve-foot wide Guadalupe River Trail is immediately adjacent to the west of the site. As concluded in the SEIR, the riparian habitat immediately adjacent to the site is of moderate quality as opposed to high quality. The riparian setback is defined by the riparian corridor's top of bank or vegetative edge, whichever is greater. And in this case, the riparian corridor is defined by the vegetative edge since the riparian tree canopies extend beyond the Guadalupe River's top of bank, as shown in the green line on the slide. The proposed office building has three elements to it. It has the underground parking garage, the ground-level commercial space and the public realm, and the tower's upper floors. And each element has varying riparian setbacks depending on its proximity to the undulating green riparian setback line. So for example, the underground parking garage would have a riparian setback ranging from one-and-a-half feet to about thirty-four feet from the edge of the riparian corridor, which is shown on the red line on the diagram. And the project's tower, upper floors, would have a riparian setback ranging almost four feet to thirty-two-and-a-half feet to the edge of the riparian corridor, which is shown in blue on the diagram. Now on to the City Council's riparian policy, which requires a thousand, a one-hundred-foot setback from a riparian corridor's top of bank or a vegetative edge, whichever is greater, and allows consideration of reduced setbacks under limited circumstances. And this project meets several circumstances identified in the riparian policy in that, one, the site's in downtown. Two, the entire site is an existing parking lot that extends fully into the riparian setback. And about fifty percent of the site is actually within the one-hundred-foot riparian setback area. The site is irregularly long and narrowly shaped with an approximately eight-hundred-forty-five-foot-long stretch along the riparian corridor. And the nearest point of the site is three hundred, one-hundred-and-thirty-two feet to the edge of the riparian corridor, which only leaves approximately thirty-two feet for development without a setback reduction at its narrowest point. Now I'm going to turn it over to Principal Planner David Keon to discuss the environmental review aspects of this project.
Thank you, Sylvia. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council, David Keon, Principal Planner with Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. Just really quickly want to go over the supplemental environmental impact report that was prepared for this project. So the city prepared a supplemental environmental impact report that was circulated for public review between July eleventh, May to July thirty-first and September twenty-first, twenty twenty. It was extended the public circulation period by one week in response to public requests, which received twelve comment letters during this public circulation period. The staff, you know, review those comment letters and most of those comments addressed issues such as traffic impacts, conformance of the riparian corridor policy and the habitat conservation plan.
Can't hear you very well.
Okay, sorry.
So. Yeah, if you could speak without looking up, that would help.
Okay. In response, the city prepared a First Amendment to the environmental impact report with responses to comments. This was published on the thirteenth of August, prior to the August twenty-fifth Planning Commission hearing. Subsequently to the August twenty-fifth Planning Commission hearing, the Sierra Club, on behalf of the Sierra Club, a letter was submitted last Friday, basically reiterating many of the same issues that were raised in the comment letter submitted on the draft EIR. Staff has prepared a response to these comments, which is included in the supplemental memo. No new issues were raised, though additional analysis was provided, which the city has responded to in the supplemental memo. Based on this analysis, the determination is the EIR is still. No new information has been provided that would require recirculation of the draft EIR and the conclusions remain the same. Next slide, please. The environmental impact report identified significant unavoidable impacts to air quality, including construction and operations, biological resources, including cumulative impacts to the riparian corridor, and noise and vibration. It also identified less than significant impacts with mitigation to hazards, materials, and construction noise. As Sylvia mentioned, there was consultation with the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Habitat Agency with regards to conformance with the Habitat Plan and based on communications and coordination with the Habitat Agency, there was a determination that because the site is already disturbed, the project will not actually be subject to the Habitat Plan conditions. And I'm going to pass it back to Sylvia for recommendations.
I'll take that one. So in conclusion, Mayor and Council, I wanted to acknowledge the memo from the Mayor, Councilmembers Peralas, Jimenez, Davis, and Foley, which staff believes is consistent with the mitigation measures included in the project and then recommend that council adopt a resolution for the certifying the EIR and then adopt resolutions approving both the vested tentative map and the special use permit approving the project. And staff is available for questions.
Great, thank you, everyone. All right, let's go to public comment and we'll come back to council.
Fermin Salsito.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Perfect. Good afternoon, City Council and fellow supervisors, constituents, and conservatives, since my name is Fermin Salsito, dreamer, carpenter out of local four oh five, native to the Bay area and San Jose resident. I'm here to voice my support for the Boston Properties Twin Tower project. As a local union carpenter, it's imperative that the developers and projects continue to thrive in our city and so continue to create job opportunities for carpenters like myself. I've gone through an apprenticeship program that has given me that training and skill set, which emphasizes on safety and quality craftsmanship. As a union worker, my benefits has given me the quality of life that everyone deserves, which includes dental, healthcare, pension, and labor wages. Being that the project is here in San Jose and the developer of Boston Properties, it's going to enable us to continue to work locally while keeping the economic benefits right here in Santa Clara County. Once again, I want to thank you for your time. I kindly ask for your approval for Boston Properties. And that's it, thank you.
Umberto.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Umberto Nava. I'm a San Jose resident and a member of local ninety-one forty-four. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Boston Properties project and I wanted to point out that this is a great improvement for the area, replacing the parking lot and bringing good paid union jobs to the city of San Jose. Not only the construction phase, but also the permanent jobs that are going here to stay. This project is going to bring a much-needed face lift to the area and bring vibrancy and be a desirable area to walk. Boston Property is project is going to inject some life to San Jose economy and also create opportunity for San Jose residents to work close to home and boost the local economy and local business, bringing back much-needed jobs after devastating impacts of the pandemic. Please support Boston Property projects and the growth of the city of San Jose as well as its residents. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Nate LeBlanc.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, my name is Nate LeBlanc. I am the Business Development Manager at the San Jose Downtown Association, speaking to you today on behalf of the organization. Our downtown design committee had the opportunity to review this project twice. Once in May of twenty nineteen with our full committee of architects and designers. We generally liked the project a lot, especially the overall architecture and approach and obviously building on a surface parking lot really spoke to our goals for downtown urban design. Again, here this summer, a smaller subcommittee had a chance to take a look at some of the improvements that had been made to the design. The more recent renderings show where Boston Properties and their design team voluntarily stepped the building back from the river and significantly improved the ground plane by restricting the vehicular access to one curb cut and garage ingress and egress point and other, you know, piece of design that we feel helps improve this and makes it more person-focused. We would like to fully support this project. We feel that this building would be a great addition to the San Jose skyline, provide much-needed jobs and ask that you approve the project and grant the permits so that we can move to the construction phase and have the building open for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Rich Turner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and members of the community. My name is Rich Turner and I'm the Director of Exhibits and Facilities at Children's Discovery Museum and we are speaking out in favor of this project. As you know, Children's Discovery Museum is directly adjacent to this project with the Guadalupe River and Trail between us. We feel that this project will be a stunning backdrop to the museum, which is one of the iconic architectural gems in the downtown skyline. The river has always been an important feature and experience around the museum. It is an outdoor living classroom for our young scientist programs to explore the local flora and fauna, water quality, and amazing discoveries such as the Colombian mammoth. So we understand the concerns for the care of the river. Boston Properties management team has involved the museum from the very beginning, soliciting our feedback, addressing concerns, and offering and learning how they can be the best neighbor possible. Our Board of Directors have agreed to advocate for moving the Almeden Office Project forward and cited the following benefits. First, the project would lead to the activation of the southernmost section of the Guadalupe River Park, which will encourage positive public use of the areas adjacent to the museum and will help mitigate and restore the river from the ecological damage resulting from the current activities within the river. Secondly, the project will provide new amenities that are easily accessible to museum visitors, such as restaurants, retail stores, which will lengthen their stay in San Jose and improve their overall downtown experience. Third, we acknowledge the project will provide much-needed and safer additional parking on weekends and holidays, which happen to be our busiest days. And finally, we are also appreciative of Boston Properties' commitment to caretaking its property surroundings, which will add sorely needed resources to the Guadalupe River Park maintenance and security. We feel confident that Boston Properties will deliver on its commitments and we're enthusiastic about these benefits of the Almeden Office Project. We encourage you to support and approve the project, thank you.
Camille Schaffer.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Camille Schaffer and I'm a Level Two apprentice carpenter at the local four oh five, living here in downtown San Jose. After four years of college, I didn't find a passion in anything that I was studying, but I did find it within the trades that the carpenters offered me. It offers me not just a job, but a career with a solid schedule where I can manage my two kids' schooling, vacation pay, 401K, full benefits, where I don't need to worry about them getting sick, and a field for me to grow in exponentially. For me, this project near home means a load off my shoulders. I can easily take my kids to school and get to work and back home efficiently, take care of whatever us adults need to take care of. We all have a life and a life stuck in traffic is same loss with your loved ones. Boston Property Projects will create jobs locally and offer me the freedom and time. This is why I would like the City Council to approve the project. Thank you for your time.
Roberto Aguilera.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Roberto Aguilera from local union ninety-one forty-four, Drive On Ladders. I have I have been living here in San Jose for more than fifteen years. This project will help me provide for my family and also grow more in my career. I know it will be an amazing new building to add to our city and I would kindly ask for the project to be approved. Thank you for your time.
Sherman Chan.
Hi, I'm Sherman Chan of CBRE. I represent Boston Properties as the listing agent for the Almeden Project and have been a Silicon Valley real estate broker for over thirty years. Our office is in downtown and we've been trying to get large tech companies here for two decades. We believe downtown's time has come. Caltrain, BART, housing, restaurants, and amenities make it a great option for large tech companies to thrive. One question, why aren't they here already? The simple answer is the existing building supply doesn't work. Current buildings are one-off, multi-tenant with traditional twenty-five-thousand square foot floorplates that major tech users don't consider as viable options. They are too small, inefficient, have too many elevators and stairs that disrupt collaboration and culture. One major CEO has told me that he hates elevators and stairs because they stifle conversation and he's right. Tech companies have specific business groups that are large, hundreds or thousands of employees. They need buildings where they can accommodate these large groups with large floorplates that allow for collaboration, efficiency, and flexibility. They need campuses where they can grow and inspire their employees. The Almeden Project as designed provides it. Not only you tend to tell us this, but we need to learn from what companies build on on their own. Nvidia's new campus in Santa Clara is made up of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square foot floorplates. Within San Jose, Verizon leased Coleman High Line with eighty-thousand square foot floorplates over six-hundred-thousand feet. In fact, Google won't look at buildings with less than forty-thousand square foot floorplates. Demand by growing tech companies is strong right now with multiple large active requirements. The ability to grow a campus, have large floorplates, and provide inspiring collaborative space is consistent and paramount in their real estate decision-making. Almeden as designed provides this. I will end with a cautionary example of a new project developed a few years ago in Santa Clara with small twenty-five-thousand square foot floorplates. During the strongest time for large requirements, the building sat vacant for two years and was rejected by multiple times by all tech companies for other larger floor plated projects. Ultimately, ownership had to change strategies, multi-tenant the building, and it's still partially vacant today. Let's not let that happen here in San Jose. Thanks.
Johnny Kleinhaus.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I wish to express my great disappointment with San Jose's willingness to override significant unavoidable impacts to the Guadalupe River as a whole, even after and if mitigation is eventually identified. If this project moves ahead with interpretation that's last staff provided for consistency with the general plan and policies, almost any creek side parcel that does not fall under the Habitat Agency permit requirements will no longer be protected from impactful development that will harm San Jose waterways, just like this project. This is because the lease of qualifying protections, exceptions is very long, but the protection seems to fall short. And it's against the riparian corridor goal of the San Jose general plan and the policies that look to a future of improved waterways and better what protected population from flooding. But I'm assuming that this will be approved today and I want to ask that since mitigation for the impact to the river has not yet been identified and at this time looks even infeasible, please ensure that no mitigation is allowed in areas where conflicting regulations and interests exist, such as areas in the safety zone of the airport and where the airport wildlife hazard mitigation plan risk animals that may be attracted to a restoration site. And also, since so many mitigations in the EIR are deferred to various permitting processes by the city and other agencies, I ask you to ensure that this process is transparent and all the documents associated with the project and permitting and mitigation should be available for public review and any future changes are also transparent and available to public review. Thank you.
Maria Garcia.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor, thanks for letting me speak today. My name is Maria Garcia. I am a member of the local ninety-one forty-four and resident of San Jose. I am here to speak on behalf of the Boston Properties Project Twin Towers. I wanted to say that I am excited to have projects like this being proposed. I wanted to say that I am excited to have projects like this being proposed in San Jose. I am mom of three and having projects like this. Projects like this will bring jobs close to home and will allow me to be able to work close to home and spend time more, spend more time with my kids. As a union carpenter, earning good wages and benefits has given me the opportunity to live in San Jose and not only will it short my commute, but also would keep my earned wages here in the city of San Jose. Thank you for letting me speak and I support this project.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is James Eggers and I am the, not only a resident of San Jose, but also the Executive Director for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. Our advocates and I believed for years that the city of San Jose respected its natural resources and cared about its waterways. This is what had made me proud to be a San Jose resident for many years, but it has recently become clear that the city is willing to sacrifice the important Guadalupe River and set a new benchmark for irresponsible development. Therefore, we have at the last minute commissioned Shoot Mahaly and Weinberger to help us. You received a letter from our attorneys in which we show that the Almeden Office Project is inconsistent with the Invention 2040 General Plan and the EIR analysis is flawed. We ask you not to approve the project, not to certify the EIR and not make a statement of overriding considerations. I personally have been a union member in several unions and support unions, but do not believe that the short-term work gains are worth the long-term damage to the environment that will affect all of our brothers and sisters in unions and far beyond. So again, we ask you not to approve the project, not to certify the EIR and not to make a statement of overriding considerations. Thank you.
Hi, Linda Ruth Ruff, California Native Plants Society, 40-year resident. We are not opposed to developing this property. We support good union jobs. What we want is for them to move their building back out of the minimal setback from the Riparian Corridor. H.T. Harvey says that if the roots of the trees next to the project are harmed, that would be an unavoidable negative impact from the project. Boston Property wants to avoid that and they want you to accept several premises. One, that they cannot make enough money on this huge project unless they intrude 28 and a half feet into the most minimal setback from the Riparian Corridor of San Jose's largest river. Two, that roots don't extend beyond the tree's drip line. We sent you scientific literature that says they do and you can see it on your own property with roots in your lawn far beyond the drip line of your tree. Three, they want you to believe that they can excavate soil three levels down, just 18 inches from the drip lines of the nearest trees without harming those trees. 18 inches. The plan to protect other trees near this project from accidental damage during construction is to rope off a buffer of 10 feet, but the Riparian trees get 18 inches. Four, they want you to abandon the general plan which provides protections for the Riparian trees. We ask you to follow the general plan and common sense. Please deny the project until they move it out of this important Riparian Corridor. Thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Clint Steele. I'm a business representative for the Operating Engineers Local Union 3 and I'm in support of this project, the Boston Properties. It will bring good local family jobs to the San Jose area and it will support the local apprenticeships that are within the affiliate unions here. Thank you for your time.
Oh, sorry, just speechless. You could have told Boston Properties, who'll give you an exception, but you have to work with the 30-foot setback. Frankly, with Coyote Valley, you could have told the wealthy Sobrato and Brandonberg families, look, you bought agricultural land and that's how it can be used. That's what you're telling the peasants there now. But you bought them out with $45 million of public funds. Our city built a firehouse right next to the Coyote Creek with no setback, so now you're building a new firehouse to replace it due to the erosion. I had pointed out that the EIR said that after 100 years, the creosote in the Will Glen Trestle Bridge is no longer a threat as long as the piers are not disturbed, only to hear my mayor say, oh, the creosote is such an environmental hazard that we have to tear that thing down. Now you're tearing down the Riparian guidelines that protect the heart of the city. Look, I don't want to be a jerk, but it's clear who butters your bread. I don't like being a jerk, but to ignore the setback guidelines is absurd and I'm sick of wasting my time. So I expect in the future I'll be watching, but I've said enough. I gotta go. I got a call that my vehicle warranty may have expired.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jason Su, Executive Director of the Guallope River Park Conservancy. We are the city's nonprofit partner promoting the active use and development of the Guallope River Park. We support Boston Properties Almeden Office Project and encourage City Council to support as well. The project has the potential to bring new visitors to the park and trail and open up opportunities for future activations and public park improvements. We commend Boston Properties on listening to our feedback, aligning the bike paths south and distancing cars away from the trail. The opening of the ground floor also creates public space opportunities even more, even more needed in these times that we live in. The Guallope River Park is designated in the general plan as a grand park and to achieve this vision, you will need projects like this to reach them. Thank you for your time and consideration for support.
Hi, before I begin, I do have a PowerPoint that I sent to city staff that I would like to be displayed. Wonderful, thank you. Hi, my name is Dashil Weeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant with the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. I'll let you know when to advance through the slides. If you could go to slide one, please. This is a map of the historical ecology of the Guadalupe River, which shows that this used to be an island in the Guadalupe River. And you can go to slide two. This is probably why we see subsidence at the project site. This is because rivers have memory. Go to slide three, please. This is a photograph of current erosion in the river channel adjacent to the project site in the river. This is valley water currently fixing a scour hole. You can go to slide four. This here is a photograph of the Guadalupe River as taken in downtown San Jose. I believe that this is what we could all hope the river would look like throughout the city. And if you could go to slide five. This is a photograph of the LA River, which is the future of the Guadalupe River that we're heading towards. We should not knowingly sacrifice the Guadalupe River and erode environmental protections for Riparian corridors. We should instead protect the Guadalupe River for the living entity that it is, for the biodiversity that it sustains and for the community benefits that a healthy ecosystem provides us. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Yes. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council. My name is Laura Drosec, a resident living in Council District 3. I am a union carpenter by trade and a mother of three children who also chose carpentry as her career path. Being a union carpenter provides my family fair living wages, healthcare and a pension, naming only a few benefits of being a union carpenter. I speak in favor and approval of the Boston Property Proposal Project on Northwest Corner of South Almeden Boulevard and Waz Way. Approval of this project will bring work not only for myself and my children, but also for an estimated 7,000 union trade families living in this area. I fear that my children will be forced with a difficult decision of moving out of this area if we don't consider them and their futures. Let's build thriving futures. Let's build union. Thank you so much for your time.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo, Council Members and Staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Doug Cheshire and I'm the Field Representative for Carpenter's Local 405 here in San Jose. And on behalf of over 7,000 members that live and work in Santa Clara County, I'm here to ask that you approve Boston Properties Almeden Office Project. Boston Properties has proposed a project that fits in and incorporates what San Jose and its citizens desire in responsible office development. A project that provides ground floor amenities and retail spaces that will allow for local residents to access and use while feeling connected to the riverfront. Boston Properties is also committed to using a union signatory general contractor, one that will provide hundreds of good paying union jobs with healthcare and a retirement right here in San Jose. This partnership will also bring forth opportunity for local apprentices, including women, minorities and at-risk youth to begin a career in the construction industry while helping build tomorrow's skilled labor workforce. Members will also have the opportunity to live and work within their own community, not having to commute long distances and keeping their earnings local to be reinvested here. The carpenters see this as a great project for the city and with Boston Properties' vision, this project will be a big part of the revitalization and highlight San Jose's downtown for years to come. Please approve this project.
Yeah, good afternoon, City Council Members and Field Supervisor. My name is Rosendo Lopez, lawyer. I apprentice and member of Carpenter Local 405. I am speaking in favor on the the Boston Property Twin Towers Project. This project will provide me with opportunity for the training. I will need to advance my career to become a German carpenter. Will help me continue my career in carpenter, working to where retirement will provide me with the necessary benefits and income to provide for myself and my family. I am full support on the Boston Property Twin Towers Project and ask that you pass this project, please. And always the opportunity to help union carpenters building this project. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo and Council Members. My name is David Beany and I'm here representing the over 35,000 men and women of the Santa Clara and San Benito Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. The project we're talking about today is important to those like myself who represent working families. And it's important because Boston Properties and WebCor are part of the high road development and construction communities. This project will support the apprenticeships that lead to the lifelong family supporting careers you're hearing about today from some of our members and the construction jobs will be well-paying ones that are filled by many of our local residents. We also support this project because it's the right type of development for our city. This project takes an existing and underutilized surface parking lot and transforms it into a modern workplace that will provide tax revenue and frankly, it's going to beautify a drab and lifeless parcel. This project is going to be an asset to San Jose on a number of levels and on the behalf of the members and the unions of my council, I urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Niels Ash, a business representative for the International Operating Engineers Local Union Number 3. I'm a representative for an estimated 4,000 members within the county of Santa Clara. I am in strong support of the Boston Properties. This project will utilize union state-approved apprenticeship programs and is essential investment back into the community with local hire requirements and homeless-to-hard-hat programs that are utilized by the unions. This union participation, training, support and investment back in the community is unparalleled as many union members live in the San Jose and surrounding areas. This project is committed to be done with a union contractor. That is an investment back into our community as well as an investment into the workers of the community. This will help clean up the area of current situation to the areas being used as, or better words, trashed. I have sat in that parking lot and watched many people relieve themselves in the Riparian Zone. I am in urge that the council supports the Boston Project Properties as a developed project is a clean project. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eddie Venancio. I'm a business representative for Teamsters Local 853. I am in support of this project. This project will provide good union paying jobs, good wages for families in our area. I've been a resident here all my entire life. I've been a union Teamster for approximately 25 years. I think this would be great for apprenticeship programs and it would be a great thing for downtown and it would create good local, good paying jobs for our residents. And I am, Local 853 is in total support of this project. We also have nearly 17,000 members in our local and we support this project. Thank you very much.
My God, where do I start? Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Where do I start? This is my barrio. You could throw a rock from this project and hit Woodrow Wilson Junior High School. That's where my mother and father graduated in the 1950s. So this is my barrio. Okay, and what Paralis has done to this area, you guys are going to approve it. It's going to be unanimous. I already know that because the last tower that went up, that's going to go up right there, adjacent to the 280, I literally cried on this committee, cried because I saw what was going to happen to my barrio. But sticking to the issue, you've done a good job though, Paralis. You have done a good job of gentrifying the very Mexicans that are going to be most impacted by this property being built. So thank you, Paralis. Thank you, Gary Dillaboe. I would like to extend one thing. Gracias para la ley en inglés, to the paisa de hablar en inglés. Gracias, gracias señor. Está muy bien. And what the señor did with the river, I want to thank him for bringing the issue with the erosion that will happen, because it will happen. This property will literally poison the river. The Aloney Burial Ground was discovered in 1987, right down the way. So it stands to reason that this area, once you start building into the ground, you're going to not only uproot the root systems of these trees, but you're also going to discover an Indian Aloney burial ground because it was on the same side. I know because I rode my bike to it when it happened. So I'm very familiar with progress and the complete desecration of native Aloney lands, okay? And Paralis, that's why you gave him that mural. You knew what you were doing. You knew what you were doing, man. You're probably one of the most corrupt politicians that I've ever come across. You know why? Because you could do it with a straight face.
Hi, thank you. A lot of Unions were here today. I hope they can be open to changes and negotiation for this project as needed. You know, as mentioned, many riparian ideas and processes during the city government report. And the last item commented, the staff person commented that we're not going to be working with some of these riparian models that are expected. What does that exactly mean? It wasn't too encouraging sounding. As I've been trying to offer, you know, for all this time, you can, just to feel safe and comfortable, you can always bring down the levels of buildings around the south-flow area of airplanes taking off. You know, 25, 50 feet if needed for safety and health and all the good stuff. Don't feel afraid that you can't do that because you can. These are, you know, the issues around building around south-flow airport issues that I really hope we're taking the Airport Commission ideas very seriously. That they tend to have a much more mellow outlook and that can do much of the same things as, you know, these over-exorbitant ideas of some within San Jose about the future of the downtown area. Good luck how we can work on these projects and do it safely. You've gotten your reports that you needed. Let's still work on it safely and not make fools of ourselves and look like fools to the rest of the country. Thank you.
Oh, I'm so thrilled. Thank you so, so much. This is a critical, critical, critical issue. It's the same issue that happens on the corner of Stockton and Julian. And that was public land. That was public land. You call, this land is redevelopment land, okay? That means it's the people's land. And you sold it to become a hotel again on my corner. It should have been a parkland. That's what I would have wanted, right? But I didn't have a chance because you sold it and made a lot of money and now it's a hotel, a big one, and polluting and all the things that we're having trouble with in our neighborhood. And that's the thing, when we're talking about changing our charter, I think you need to be is what's coming up, is that we need to change our charter to look at climate crisis and everything that we do. And so Okay, fine, fine. But I'm going to get back to the point because what it is, is horrific. It's horrific to our, to our, to our community. It's horrific. And it's taking over our lands and then you say it's going to be okay with the river. We've just been told it's not going to be okay with the river, not going to be okay with the trees, and we have to stop developing. That is the truth. It has to be degrowth. And my husband said to me after talking at the Charter Commission, that we need to be at zero by 2025, okay? We have a serious, we have serious work to do. And what he said that we needed to do is on any land that's undeveloped like this, we need to grow food. So I'm saying that I want the Sierra Club, I want every club to sue the city of San Jose because this is wrong. This is not what we need to be doing. And it's wrong. And you're making, it's business as usual and you're saying that you're creating jobs. I've seen it with the VTA BART. Oh, all the jobs that we're going to have and there should be. Well, we need to change that with BART. You know, we need to adapt to the reality. If we have to be below, stop burning fossil fuels. That has to be our reality and we have to, that is the truth. So, you know, or we're going to burn up and die, all of us.
Yeah, I think, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of our neighborhood. I'm very well aware of the homeless situation in our state. We need to find a solution to this problem for sure. I learned last week that you are moving a set of homeless RVs to a parking lot behind my community. Because you did not discuss this with us before planning this move, I'm very worried about the issues that this creates for us. It is not wise to do such a thing without a lot of planning. For example, did you get the people in?
I think we're not on the same item, ma'am. This is related to development.
Because this was done in Russia, really not think that this has been thought out. Would you ever accept a neighbor shining floodlights into your backyard? This is what the city is doing for us near our houses. I think that the city has acted hastily for some reason. I request you to consider all this.
If you want to speak related to the safe parking item, that's probably something folks will be speaking about on open forum. That's not this item.
I have two more hands up. Brett Davis.
Just to remind everybody who's speaking, we're speaking only on the office development on Almeden Avenue and Waz Way in downtown San Jose. That's the topic.
Members and mayor, my name is Brett Davis, local resident of San Jose of over 34 years. And I'm also with District Council 16 Painters and Allied Trades, representing over 12,000 Union members. I'm speaking in favor of this project. Boston Properties will bring good family-supporting jobs to San Jose and also this will provide work to local contractors to bid on. Many construction jobs have been delayed due to COVID and this job will give some light to the end of that tunnel. This will bring a much-needed facelift to the existing parking lot. Please approve this project and put local San Jose residents to work. Thank you.
Thanks to all the members of the community who participated in speaking and offering your thoughts both today and in past meetings. I went straight to public comment and neglected to hear from one other voice. We would typically hear from the applicant. So I want to apologize to the applicant. I'm not sure who's speaking for Boston Properties. Is that Christina? Okay. So I want to invite her to speak at this time.
Thank you for having us. Let's just get our slide deck ready to go. Looks like we're ready. Okay, well, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Liccardo and members of the council. My name is Aaron Fenton and I oversee the development activities for Boston Properties in the Bay Area. And we are excited to bring this project for your consideration today. We've been a large investor in San Jose for over 20 years and we've seen firsthand how San Jose has evolved over that time. And with its access to public transit, international airport, higher education institutions, access to housing and business-friendly environment, San Jose is poised to emerge strongly from this recession. And we are very optimistic on the outlook for the commercial real estate environment here. Boston Properties is structured as a full-service real estate firm with a strategy of developing and holding its assets for the long term. When we design and entitle our projects, we do so very thoughtfully to ensure that the projects are best-in-class, highly sustainable, and economically viable, because that's our business model. And to be respectful of our allotted time, I'm going to end my comments and turn it over to my colleague Christina Bernardin to make our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Before I present the project, I'd like to thank Sylvia Doe, Patrick Kelly, Angela Wong, David Keon, Kai Tao Lee, Kara Hawkins, Joe Porvenzano, Stephen Forster, David Tran, and Kelly Klein for their tremendous collaboration, guidance, and support over the past two and a half years. This project brings up to 1.4 million square feet of office and significant ground floor retail and amenity to downtown San Jose. This project also provides benefits for the city. We're committing to Union labor and will bring 2,000 Union construction jobs per year over the course of four years and 10,000 permanent jobs once built. This project will generate $4 million to the City General Fund and $6.5 million to the school district annually. We're supporting affordable housing with $17 million allocated to the commercial linkage fee. We're providing public art valued at 1% of our development cost and public parking for the community on nights and weekends. As Steph has mentioned, our project is consistent with the general plan, city ordinances, policies, and development goals. I'm pleased to introduce Hugh Trumble, our architect, who will present the project design.
Thank you, Christina. I'm very excited to present this project to you today. I think in particular because there's been a lot of focus that's been brought up to this building to make it a civic building, one that really works to bring the neighborhood and the community together. The composition is composed of two primary bars. They have been tailored to really outfit and to work with the requirements of the workforce today. On the foreground, there is a sinuous curve of the first bar that addresses the Guadalupe River. And the second bar addresses Almeden Boulevard and the more urban fabric beyond. If we go to the next image, you see the building really opens up at center stage and creates an open aperture that invites the green up into a series of terraces where the workers can come out and interact with one another and become part of the urban theater and have a dialogue with Discovery Meadow. As you move around to the south facade, you start to see how those terraces become part of our sustainable program and really work to embellish our performance facades. But what's really interesting about the building as a whole is the way that the building lifts itself up off of the ground and provides about three acres of publicly accessible space at the ground plane. As we look from Almeden Boulevard straight through the building to the Riverwalk, we see retail and amenities animating public plazas. As we look at the ground plan, we see a very vibrant and active floor plan that has a series of paseos that link the two sides of the city together. There are plazas where people come and meet and greet one another and work within the community. As we go to the next image, we're really focused on our sustainability program, which is looking to reduce parking. It's looking to reduce energy and it's looking to reduce our carbon footprint. Together, we're targeting a all-electric building, which will create a wonderfully performance-driven building. With that being said, we have a wonderful project here. It's state-of-the-art and we believe strongly that it will be a major contributor to your community. With that being said, I'd like to hand the floor back over to the mayor.
Mayor, do we have time to respond to comments as well?
I'm sorry, I don't have the clock in front of me this time. No, we don't. Okay. You don't, Christina, but I suspect there's going to be a lot of questions. So I suspect we're going to hear your response one way or another. Very soon. But thank you very much for the presentation. All right, we will move on then to council comments and questions. And I want to congratulate Councilmember Paralis, who I know his team has worked very hard on this. I have a lot of thanks to give in a moment, but I'd like to give him a chance to speak first.
Yeah, thank you very much, mayor. This has been a long, drawn-out process with a lot of work put in and really want to say thank you as well to all of our city staff, Boston Properties, my team as well for the work that was put in. But I want to thank our community as well. We've had a lot of community engaged on this project for quite some time. And as was heard in the public comments today, the bulk of the concerns coming from our conservation and environmental advocates in our community, many of whom, several of us and not all of us, really have worked and fought alongside of them on issues because we care about these issues of conservation, sustainability, resiliency, and preserving our natural environment. And we have the balance to strike of really, when we look at areas like our downtown core and areas where we have tried to refocus our development from the past, where we used to sprawl out throughout the, all throughout the city of San Jose. And as we've refocused here, we run into these areas where we find a challenge to try and put together projects that are both sustainable but also projects that are feasible on both sides of the issue, quite frankly. And when you look at this narrow footprint, really was one of the most toughest locations to work with. And quite frankly, at the start, I was not super optimistic that we would be able to get here because of the real narrow footprint that we have in this area. It made it very difficult. And so I want to say thank you to Boston Properties, perseverance and for working with our community. I, very early on, knew that the concerns were likely going to stem with how close this was adjacent to our riparian corridor and the reason why San Jose is where it is here with the Guadalupe River. And so, early on back in 2016, was really ensuring that we could preserve that and was happy to be able to support our riparian policy. And it would be our hope to be able to do that with every single project. And I think when you look at locations like this, this is the ones that make it tough and it's a challenge to get to really something that fits well. And I want to give credit again to both Boston Properties and to our stakeholders and our environmental advocates to work together. I know that we didn't ultimately end up seeing eye to eye on what could move forward. But I will say that the design did change several times to adapt. And as you saw through the presentation, really trying to narrowly fit in amongst the riparian corridor there and squeeze in a project, a very dense, tall project into this small, narrow footprint. So I just want to say thank you again. I know it's very, very hard on everybody's, from everybody's page. So in regards to, just a few questions for staff, because I know these came up through the feedback that we got. So one of the letters that we received stated that according to the SEQA, an EIR is inadequate if it fails to identify feasible mitigations. And I know that our team provided a response to this in the supplemental that was released earlier today. But for those that haven't had a chance to read through that, I wanted to see if you could respond. And my understanding is that we did identify a menu of mitigation measures and now the applicant has to go to implement them before the next grading permit is issued.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Paralis. David Keon, Principal Planner, Environment Review. I could answer that question. So with regard, the main issues with regard to the adequacy and actually the feasibility of the cumulative bio-impact identified in the EIR for off-site restoration. As discussed in the First Amendment and again to the supplemental memo, the off-site mitigation measure of cumulative impacts is feasible for several reasons. Mainly, first, the city and the project applicant is committed to implementation of the mitigation. And that is also evidence in the council memo just issued yesterday. The mitigation measures include performance standards to achieve the 3.6 acres of enhanced or restored habitat. And this also includes monitoring for a period of 10 years after completion. The actions are identified can be feasibly achieved through performance standards identified in the mitigation measure.
David, can I actually speak more directly into that microphone?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Also getting used to speaking in a mask. So the actions that are identified can feasibly achieve the performance standards identified in the mitigation measures. And also finally, city staff coordinated with the project biologists about the feasibility and the biologists determined that there is sufficient land for 3.6 acres of enhanced or restored riparian habitat available from the Santa Clara Valley floor. So the mitigation measures are feasible. However, because there's no guarantee that it can happen in a timely manner, that there was a determination that the impact would still be significant and unavoidable to be conservative for the purposes of SEQA. Hence, that is the reason for the significant unavoidable impact and necessity for a statement of overriding consideration.
Thank you. And I know that, again, that was a lengthy supplemental that was put out and recognize, again, there's a lot of scrutiny on projects like this. And so at times, it takes that length, but this is all public documents and just certainly a lot, though, to digest just for today. Another question was that the project Another question was that the project was regarding the project's compliance regarding the soil erosion, and you saw some of the photos that community members put up, and I wanted to just see if you can respond to that.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Peralis. So the EIR and disclosed in the EIR and the First Amendment, there are issues, you know, there are issues raised concerning soil erosion and creek bank erosion. And due to that, there are measures identified in the EIR and also in the permit in order that include the implementation of standard permit conditions. This is required for all projects that are just doing soil disturbance. These include items like basically sweeping the site, making sure there's no tracking of dust. In addition, the project required to obtain a National Pollution Discharge and Elimination System General Construction Permit, which includes measures for reducing erosion. There will also be the preparation of Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan prior to commencement of construction and grading activities. This prevention plan will include measures for soil stabilization, sediment and erosion control, and non-storm water management and waste management to be implemented during demolition, site excavation, grading, and construction activities. Finally, the project had a geotechnical report prepared based on the specifics of the project design that was included in circulation of the draft EIR in Appendix F. This geotechnical report also includes recommendations for site-specific measures to reduce erosion, and that is included as a condition of approval in the permit. So with all these, that was a determination that with all the requirements and also the geotechnical report, that is a standard condition if the geotechnical report is done, that this would be less than significant for hydrology and for soil erosion.
Thank you. And I don't know if that makes it anywhere clear. I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to, in my best layman's terms, describe, I think, the entirety of the process and the concerns that we heard and are now responding to, and then ultimately the decision that the council has to make. And because we are indeed having to make a decision in regards to our riparian policy and the setback that we're looking at here, and don't want to make that hidden in any way, that's something that we have to decide as a council if we want to accept or not. And as you've seen by my memo, I am comfortable with that. It did not come to that term easily, and I know my colleagues didn't either, as we worked together on trying to get to a compromise best of sorts as we move forward. I am completely comfortable and confident that we are adhering to our policy, those 6-34, as it allows us this opportunity, you know, where necessary, to make these types of decisions, because we're not going to have that opportunity, just like on this site. If we were to push back, you know, and then have a hard and fast policy at 100 feet, we would essentially have a surface parking lot here for the rest of time. And that's what we have unfortunately today, and that's what we've had. And so in these circumstances, we need to find that middle ground and what is possible. And I do know, and we're not the experts, as you just described, I do know, though, we have a lot of policies and requirements, right, to be able to follow and to ensure that what we're approving to be built can be built, can be built safely, and that we're making all of those findings public. That's what this CEQA document is about. That's what these public hearings are about. And quite frankly, that's what you as professional staff are here for, to help us to do that analysis, to get to the bottom of these tough decisions, and then allow us ultimately to make the best decisions, the most educated decisions possible. And as is common, a lot of times, we'll get a challenge and critiques on that. But ultimately, what I've been able to review from the work of our staff and from the reports that have followed is that we are in adherence with our policies. We are approving something that I think meets the spirit of all of that, no doubt. We're having to make exceptions here, but at the same time, we are approving something that is an overall benefit to our community and being able to make a benefit, most importantly in my mind, and I've had a number of conversations and actually recently walked with some of our environmental advocates in the area, on talking about how it is that we can actually continue to beautify, clean up the Guadalupe River, no longer make it a forgotten element and gem that it is of our city, and really turn and face it, bring projects like this to better the area, to improve the area. That's a requirement within this project, and I appreciate the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy and being willing to be a partner with us here to do that very mitigation and help us in the area here. That's a big part of this project. And so I am confident and comfortable with the project being able to move forward. I am still crossing my fingers that it's actually going to happen. We've seen a lot of these projects, and I think Boston Properties has made right on their commitments thus far, and I have confidence that they will continue to do so, and we're now going to be working with them in the months and years ahead, not only through the development, but on the important mitigation matters in the area. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve the memo authored by myself, the mayor, and councilmembers Jimenez, Davis, and Foley.
Thank you. It's a motion from Councilmember Peralis, a second from Councilmember Davis. Christina, I want to apologize, I misunderstood the amount of time that had elapsed in the presentation. And Nora, correct me if I'm wrong here, the applicant gets five minutes for a presentation and then five minutes for rebuttal, is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, so just check in with here with the clerk and with Henry, how much time has elapsed?
The initial five minutes for presentation has elapsed.
Great.
Five minutes remain for rebuttal.
Okay, great. So Christina, my apologies, if you'd like to offer rebuttal, certainly welcome to offer it now.
Yes, yes, please, Mayor, thank you. I'll let the chair share his screen. I'll spend the next five minutes speaking to the following topics: Riparian functions, the ground floor pedestrian realm, the evolution of our building, and bird safe design. Experts have stated that riparian buffers, known as lands located along the riparian habitat, have main functions to improve water quality, reduce flooding and erosion, and expand and augment wildlife habitat. As the site exists today, none of those functions are being met. However, with the development of the proposed project, each of these functions will be addressed. Boston Properties has owned the site for 20 years, and these pictures are from Sunday. The site is a paved surface parking lot. The current condition of the riparian area is sadly an environment full of trash, debris, invasive species, and encampments. Because the parking lot is paved during rain events, the water carries contaminants from the lot, including oils, heavy metals, exhaust, and flows to the river, where it has a negative effect on water quality. Additionally, no aspects of the current site helps reduce flooding and erosion, nor does it augment wildlife. Through our development, we are adding 13,000 square feet of native landscaping, expanding the existing riparian area near our site by 20%. This landscaping provides natural filtration of the contaminants to treat the storm water before it flows offsite, resulting in cleaner water quality. Secondly, landscaping, as well as the building tower, lowers water velocity flows, which in turns reduces erosion and sedimentation of the stream. Lastly, the landscaping will expand and augment wildlife habitat. Our project will perform 3.6 acres of mitigation to improve the habitat, and we've been proactive in finding partnerships for this mitigation. As you can see, the current condition of the site does nothing to augment the riparian corridor. However, with the development of our proposed project, the environmental aspects will be improved. Over time, we've made changes to the building to address comments from our partners and community stakeholders. We designed our ground floor pedestrian realm to revitalize San Jose Core next to Discovery Meadow. The original project design above shows vehicle access in pink. We made two major changes here. One, reduced vehicle traffic to only ramps that enter our below-grade garage, and two, moved our ground floor loading docks to our garage. An expensive but change for the right thing to do. We've also changed our building setback to respond to the community. Our original project was designed with a building footprint that expanded the entire breadth of our project site. There was a 0-foot setback from our property line. We then provided a 14-foot setback from our property line, and this design was studied for CEQA. Since the CEQA process, our team made additional reduced changes to our building again. Our above-grade tower is now 17 feet from our property line and at minimum 35 feet from the top of bank. At the community hearing in June, there were concerns of the garage with hypothesis that tree roots will be affected under the drip line. The city CEQA consultant does not believe that's the case, as the lot is impervious and roots grow towards the water stream, but we still wanted to address this perceived concern. The below-grade garage was reduced to avoid any and all encroachment within the riparian edge drip line. We're also required to meet root protection standards as we begin construction. All of these changes have reduced our building by 290,000 square feet, a 13% reduction. For bird safe design, the city's biologist studied our project, and in their expert opinion, bird safe design is necessary along the northwest and south façades, which are the façades visible to the riparian corridor. We're complying with this recommendation and are required to monitor this design for three years. Mayor and councilmembers, this final project is truly a collaborative effort between Boston Properties, the city, and community partners. Boston Properties is committed to sustainability. Salesforce Tower, our building in San Francisco, is the top 10 greenest building in the U.S., and upon installation, will have a black water system and a high-rise building. Downtown San Jose is now evolving to becoming an urban employment center for office development, and we are really proud to be part of that vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, we'll come back then to council. I just wanted to offer my thanks, and there's a lot of folks to thank, so please be patient with this, but want to start with Christina and her team. I know Bob Peaster has been working on this for about 20 years over at Boston Properties, well before I got into office, and Erin Fenton as well, and I know someone I used to work with quite a bit, Ruvie Harcoon, has recently been working on it on their side, but certainly understood this project for many years during her days from redevelopment. This is something that the city has aspired to create for more than two decades now, and I'm really cheered to see this beautiful design that was put before us. I think this is giving an incredible addition to our skyline, and for all the reasons Christina described, an enhancement to that riparian corridor and the environmental, the environment around the Guadalupe and in downtown. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition and bluntly, a superior alternative to a paved parking lot, which is what it is today. I want to thank Rosalind, Huey, Nancy Klein, and Blague, Zalalich, Emily, everybody in OEDs worked so hard on this, and as well, everybody on Chris Burton's team as well, and the project team across the many departments, Angela Wang, Patrick Kelly, Sylvia Doe, Tai Chow-Lay, David Keon, just heard from Kara Hawkins, Robert Manford, Stephen Forrester, Joe Provenzano, Sam Young, Jay Guevara, Jordana Sabatelli, and Floran La Busteia, and of course, in the city attorney's office, because we know inevitably it always involves the city attorney's office, and this one definitely will, Johnny Pham in particular, and Nora and everyone on her team. And then I also want to thank Christina Ramos on Councilmember Peralis's team, as well as Kelly Klein and Joe DeValcourt on ours, and all of my council colleagues who worked and were so thoughtful in putting this memorandum forward. This has obviously been a long time coming, and that's why I'm thanking all these folks. As a council member, when I took over in, what is it, 2007, I guess, we were hoping that this project would rise many years ago, and the timing wasn't right. The economics wouldn't support it. And we know they still might not. We're going to approve this thing, and we hope it gets built, because it's beautiful, and I hope it becomes part of our downtown. But the reality is, it is very, very uncertain about when it will actually get built, because we probably have 30 beautiful buildings that have all been approved by this city over the last few years that are all just sitting, waiting in the wings here in the downtown for someone to finance them. So all we can do is provide the opportunity. I know that there's a lot of concern among several members of the environmental community, and these are friends and people I've worked with on the same side of a lot of issues in the past, and I appreciate their heartfelt concerns, and I know these are folks who are very knowledgeable and very serious about these issues. I can't help but to state the obvious here, because I know it's very easy to jump into the weeds, but the obvious is, this is a paved parking lot. This is not a pastoral paradise. And, you know, for all the reasons why the San Clara Valley Habitat Plan has different setback requirements for different projects on undeveloped parcels versus developed parcels, I think it's really important for us to take the context of what it is today and not simply make what I think would be the wrong set of assumptions, that somehow or another, we're disrupting greenfield, which clearly this is not. You know, the Habitat Plan makes a very clear distinction around setbacks based on whether or not you've got to develop footprint, and certainly whether or not there is pavement and pervious surface that is, in fact, expanded or decreased. And what we've seen through the presentation of Christina is what we get is a net benefit in terms of the green that is brought to the site. And I think this developer has taken great pains in many, many months, I should say years, to try to accommodate a lot of concerns that they anticipated and that they heard from the environmental community. I think, you know, the second point I just want to make on the environmental issue is, you know, we unanimously approved a climate smart plan for a reason, because we believe that greenhouse gas emissions are, though not the only concern we have environmentally, but the primary concern. And everything about this project is what we want to accomplish through climate smart. And about 30% of the greenhouse gas savings in that plan come from our decisions as a city to choose to develop densely in urban cores, to bring jobs to the core, and supplant this development pattern, which has been built for automobiles, into a city built for people. And that's exactly what this project represents. So, you know, I know that there are debates about the value, the competing values at stake here, but I think it's important to recognize there are very important environmental values that are competing on the side of supporting this project. And, you know, certainly, we can all introduce a war of experts and so forth, but the biological analysis report from HTRV, I think, was pretty clear. That is, it confirms more or less what we can see with our plain eyes, which is this reach, and I'm quoting now from the staff report, "This reach of Guadalupe River is highly fragmented with very little undisturbed habitat due to the highly urbanized surrounding environment and human-related disturbances. The riparian corridor adjacent to the project is extremely limited in its habitat value and influence." And I think, you know, I think we recognize what this severely damaged ecosystem of Guadalupe results from. Yes, there are certainly mistakes that have been made in decades past in terms of development, but fundamentally, it results from a lack of attention to this river. And providing eyes on the river from nearby housing and office and other development, and we hope restaurants and cafes and other things that bring people out to the river in a way that supports a thriving and healthy urban riverfront environment is what we want. We see that in other cities. Unfortunately, the pattern of development in San Jose, going back a half a century ago, was basically to build everything with the back to the river. And so what we have is a dark part of downtown where people are afraid to go unless we can bring activity there in a way that is environmentally consistent with their ambitions. So I think, you know, I applaud Boston Properties for all the efforts they've made on bird safe design, on the efforts to move the parking back to ensure it would be well behind, away from the drip line. The pedestrian-friendly focus of this project, I think, is tremendous. A lot of pedestrian circulation around the building, a lot of direct connections, and I think that's going to be really all the difference in the world as we try to bring this riverfront back to life. It's going to come to life because there are people that are enjoying public space. And I emphasize public space. This will be all of the ground floor open to the public, and of course, there are a lot of public benefits that come with this. The $17 million that Christina referred to among the impact fees, let's be clear what that's for, that's entirely for affordable housing. Every dollar of that goes to affordable housing. In addition to all the other supporting fees that this project In addition to all the other supporting fees that this project will pay, I think you saw reference to the property tax revenues. Schools that get six and a half million dollars a year, that is something I know they critically and vitally need, in addition to all the other public benefits. So I enthusiastic to see this move forward. I hope that they have the financing and the tenant to make it happen, and I'm grateful for everyone's hard work to get us to this point. All right, councilmember Mayhan.
Thanks, Mayor, and I'll just echo your thanks to Boston Properties. I will not go through the exhaustive list you gave. I don't even think I'm aware of all the individuals you named, but it, obviously, well-deserved gratitude, and I know Councilman Peralos's office has done a lot of work here, and it's been over two and a half years of iterating on the development proposal in an attempt to balance the kind of growth we want to see in our downtown with legitimate environmental concerns. So I just appreciate the lengths that Boston Properties has gone to, to listen and be willing to modify their plans and be a responsible investor in the city, and let's hope they are able to make that investment here. And I think, Mayor Liccardo, you laid out the many positives of the project. It's a beautiful building. It's LEED gold-certified, dense, downtown. This is where we want to be dense. It's where we want to attract jobs, provides good jobs both in the development of the building as well as, once the building's occupied, generates those public tax revenues and has potential to activate a unfortunately neglected riverfront. So I'm pretty excited about the role that this development can play in the ongoing transformation of our downtown. Since I'm not in the Brown Act group on this with the folks who wrote the memo, I did want to ask just a couple of questions about environmental impacts and mitigation and kind of the public process going forward from here. So first was, one of the public speakers showed the LA River, which I know is not the direction we're trying to go in, and I just wanted to understand from staff, is there a likelihood of needing to extend the concrete channel for this project in the future?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This is Robert Manford, Deputy Director for Planning. I did see the picture of the LA River. It's a clearly channeledized river for purposes of preventing flood. That is not the case here.
Great, and I guess, just to add to that, as we, I know there's, I was just down there the other day, and there's a bit of work going on in that riverbank where there's been quite a bit of erosion. I just do, we don't anticipate needing to put in, to concretize the river there to protect that property, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and so we're confident that the measures that will be used in protecting the riverbank there will prevent flooding and erosion, protect the property while also maintaining as natural of a river as we can have in that area?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, good. That was what I thought from reading the documents, but I just wanted to ask that here. There's also been this concern raised, and we heard from a few speakers, about the precedent that we're setting, and can you just clarify for me and the public, just what exactly is the precedent that's set here? And I think the mayor kind of alluded to the different requirements we have for different parcels, but can you just lay out in a little more specificity what precedent affinity is being set?
In this particular case, I do not believe, or staff does not believe, that there is a precedent set in action, just because each project is reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and for this particular site, there is no habitat on-site. As the mayor clearly said, it is a paved parking lot. It's very impervious, and the project is not increasing the perviousness of the site.
Okay, and, but on parcels near the river, where there's an existing parking lot or wherever it may be that comes up inside of that, certainly a hundred feet or even thirty-five feet, the rule is that you all can, in your discretion, allow for the development to be where it currently exists, is that right? Okay. And are we concerned long-term as we see more investment downtown and what kind of overall impact that may have on the river?
For purposes of this particular case, the impact already exists cumulatively. This particular project is not causing that impact, it's just contributing to an already existing cumulative impact, which the EIR clearly outlines.
Sorry, I missed the last part there.
There is an already cumulative impact, pre-existing condition, that this particular project is not contributing, it's not causing, but it's just contributing to, from a cumulative standpoint.
Sorry for the naive question, but building up and adding all that weight on the site, that's not, that's not going to affect the river, just the way these are built?
No, it's not, because the project has best management practices and mitigation measures that are standard.
Okay, great. And then I guess, I just wanted to end on with the memo from the mayor and colleagues further defining off-site mitigation with PRNs and potentially outside partners. Is there a process by which concerned members of the public would be aware of what that process looks like and maybe be able to give input and participate in some way?
I could respond to that. So, thank you, councilmember Mayhan. So, this would be part of the mitigation monitoring process, and so that process would occur prior to usually grading permit issuance, but sometimes other cases, you know, such as certificate of occupancy. This mitigation measure would require, you know, the implementation of confirmation that the, that the plan is actually being implemented. All those documents would be publicly available. A member of the public, any member of the public can request to see them once they're submitted. It would be also tracked as part of what we call the mitigation monitoring reporting program, and that is reported to the Transportation and Environment Committee biannually, and we do include tracking basically what mitigation measures, which projects are currently under review, and what mitigation measures we are tracking. So there are opportunities for the public to monitor through that process and also monitoring when they know the project comes in, they could request the information when those are submitted.
Okay, and given that there's been a lot of interest, rather than require them to request it, is it possible to just post those documents to the project page on the city website?
Yeah, I mean, we could, like with the Habitat Management Plan and the mitigation plan, we can post those to the project website. We may have to create a new website if it's, because it'll be moved to the completed EIR section, but we could definitely do that.
I would certainly think that might be a good idea, just given that there's, I've certainly got a lot of feedback and a lot of questions about the project, and so I think there might be a benefit to just proactively posting those on the project page if it isn't too much of an inconvenience. And then you mentioned that it would go to TNE. I didn't quite catch what you said there.
So the Transportation and Environment Committee, every six months, has a report on how the mitigation monitoring reporting program is going. So this is all projects that have approved of the EIR or mitigated negative declaration, then the city tracks, you know, how compliance is going for all those projects that require that, and so that's a report out from the planning department to the TNE committee biannually. And it includes all projects, and it also lists all mitigation measures that are being tracked.
Great, okay, thank you. Well, again, I'm very supportive of seeing us build and increase density downtown, bring jobs downtown. I'm very supportive of the project. I guess my long-term concern is, as we see that development close to the river, I just, I don't want to see that, I want to see that river be enhanced and protected and not become a concrete channel that we have to reinforce because now we're protecting these assets that we, in retrospect, decide we built too close to a river. So that's where my questions and concern are coming from. I'm certainly not an expert on these things, as you can all clearly tell, but I appreciate you entertaining my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate, first of all, all the work that's been done over the years on this project by the councilmember, by Councilman Peralos and the developer. I think it's a beautiful-looking project, and I think there's been a lot of work to try to mitigate the effects and improve the project based on all the comments over the years. I support all of the work to densify our downtown and build a vibrant downtown and build, and provide good union jobs. I think there's a lot of great promise in this project. You know, as I looked at this project in the past few weeks, I too was a bit hesitant based on the proximity to the Guadalupe River, the encroachment on the riparian corridor, was, you know, going back and forth about, about some of the questions that we've been addressing tonight. I do appreciate the memo, the mayor and councilmembers, Jimenez Davis-Foley and Peralos, that addressed those concerns. I appreciate a lot of the conversation that we've had tonight. I still have a few questions. I want to follow up with some of the questions that Councilmember Mayhan asked, a little bit more specific on some of those questions on the erosion and flooding issues. I'll start with the erosion question, and I know that the EIR kind of talks about the erosion, and I know there was a sort of a general comment that we don't think erosion's an issue, and maybe this is a question more for the developer or somebody who has more specifics about the underground portion. I guess first I'll start with, I know that the exception was made because there was a parking lot on the surface, but it does look to me like the underground portion might extend even closer to the river's bank than the parking lot did. So I want to understand that, that the, how close we're getting to the side of the river on the underground portion of the project versus how close we were with the parking lot, and as we get close, what concerns there might be about erosion and what that would do to the stability of the building, and, you know, back to Councilmember Mayhan's question, I mean, I, you know, I know there's engineering work that's been done, but it does concern me about future issues with erosion on the riverbank and, you know, the stability of that building structure and what new work would need to be done to ensure that the building is stable, that the riverbank is stable. So is there somebody on the project who might have a little bit more details about how that's being, we're being assured that the, that that issue has been addressed?
Yes, councilmember, I think just on to those comments, your first question about the extent of the below-grade parking structure, so just for clarity, the parking structure, as it sits today, expands the entire breadth of our project site. Our below-grade parking will not go past our project site or the existing parking garage or the parking site that's existing on-site. So it's actually being pulled in even further. If I can ask Frank to just share slide twenty on the current project setback diagram. Might be having issues sharing his screen, but the setback diagram shows that the existing project site is the area that's highlighted in black, and that's what exists today as the parking, and the garage is the line in red that's pulled in further. So along the north part of our site, it's actually set back in further about, you know, ten to twelve feet from what's existing today, and then other locations throughout the site have set back further into our site. And regarding bank stability, Frank, can you please go to slide twenty-nine? Our geotech consultant performed onsite exploration, including soil borings and lab testing on-site, and the explorations extended to a maximum depth of about one-hundred-and-twenty-one feet below the ground surface, well beyond the depth of our parking garage, which is fifty-three feet below the ground surface. And in their expert opinion, the project will not cause failure to the creek bank, so the foundation, which actually supports the weight of the building, is below the riverbank, which actually allows for the building to unload weight from the river. Additionally, the soils next to the foundation of our garage are stronger than the soils near the bank, providing more than enough resistance to avoid failure. Also, by planting the extensive new landscaping along our site, the additional thirteen-thousand square feet of landscaping, the roots of the landscaping will also grow and stabilize the soil along the trail.
Okay, thank you for addressing that. It's hard to tell from the drawing exactly about those distances, but, you know, I am concerned about the erosion, but I assume that the engineering is rigorous and that it'll be protected. My second question is about the flooding. When I look at the map of downtown flood zones, the hundred-year flood zone for downtown is just upstream of that area, and so, you know, I'm just concerned about, you know, the relief of that flood area if we, when we get to those flood events, and, you know, as we know, the, there's two elements of climate change plan, the smart climate plan. One obviously is eliminating carbon from our future development. The other is the mitigation of what we're already dealing with in terms of what the effects of the current climate change is going to be, right? And so how we deal with flooding, how we deal with the future events that we're seeing happening all over the world right now, and we know those floods are coming, even though, even though it's hard to imagine right now in the drought we're in, that flood will happen. So when I, when I read the answers on the latest questions from Sierra Club about flooding, the question was kind of, well, we can't really address that now, that's a future event. We don't really have a plan necessarily for this developer to address that future flooding issue. That concerned me a little bit, and, you know, I don't want to necessarily leave us responsible in the future for some, you know, for not having thought through what the flooding, what we're going to do about flooding that might result from this, you know, from the fact that there's this narrow channel here. So I don't know who's going to address that or what the issue is, but it concerned me.
Councilmember Cohen, I think it would probably, and I know this goes back two decades to when this, when the flood control project was really built, and I guess we'd probably need to go find some folks in the city who may have some of that historical knowledge. Chris, I don't know if you want to chime in, but, you know, we had a very serious problem of flooding back in, as recently as the mid-nineties, because I can remember dragging my grandfather, actually, my family worked on primarily because I got here late, but, you know, getting my grandfather out of his house on Fifth Street, and the flood project, Guadalupe flood project, was really designed for that purpose, and that's in place now. Chris, is there anybody who can offer more detail?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we have anyone from Public Works available over the Zoom, but Public Works do do a lot of analysis based on the information available, taking into consideration all of the flood improvements that have been made to downtown over the years, and the site does exist outside of that flood zone. So through that Public Works process, we do make sure that it's consistent with all of the requirements that are set in place for that.
Okay. Anyway, I just want to make sure, you know, we never do anything that's going to set ourselves up for, you know, future and expensive issues that, you know, that we're, that we're kind of just leaving for something else because, you know, we're excited about this development, and while this is a great-looking project, and I know that this is a, we said, this is a difficult place to build, you know, and I'm not opposed to any of the benefits of this project, I just want to, you know, I just don't want us later on to regret something that causes a problem. So I don't know the answer to that issue, but just want us to be aware of all of these kind of things as we, as we set out for these, for this. And so, maybe there's no answer to that today, but just something to think about.
Councilmember?
Councilmember?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jay Guevara, Deputy Director for Planning. I have a question for you. The project is not within the FEMA one-hundred-year flood plane. There are no city requirements, and it's considered an area of moderate or minimal flood hazard.
Yeah, no, I see it's just outside, but I was just making sure that it wouldn't be, you know, doing something that would potentially enhance the just-upstream effect, but I appreciate that answer, and if you're comfortable that that's not going to cause a problem, then that's a, you know, then I'll be satisfied with that today.
And do you have a response as well, councilmembers? So again, the site as it sits right now is a hundred percent impervious, and with the post-construction conditions, we're actually reducing the perviousness of the site by adding onsite flow-through planters, and we're also having mechanical filters in our below-grade garage. This work will reduce the reduction of flow for a ten-year storm event by fifteen percent. So with the post-construction project, we're actually reducing concerns of flooding on-site.
Okay, thank you. I think, oh, just one more thing, then, just about the precedent question, you know, on other sites where we have more space to work with, I hope that we won't necessarily always say, since we have paving to the edge of the river, we're going to use all that space to the edge of the river. So that's all I'm, you know, say on that. If we do have space to be able to do more setback, we maybe will fix our mistakes we've made in the past and take advantage of the more space we have, but this case, I understand the reasons why we might have to make an exception. I'm going to ask, maybe I don't need to ask for this friendly amendment I was going to ask for, because I do hear that you're saying we're going to come back to TNE regularly and get updates on how this mitigation is going. I was going to ask for some friendly amendment to make sure that we get reports on this because I see that the memo encourages this mitigation, and I just wanted to ensure that we get reports on how the mitigation is going. So as long as that will happen by course, I'm satisfied with that. So that's the end of my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you, and so I want to thank the presentation of staff, Boston Properties, and the comments from members of the public on all sides of this issue. I also want to thank the mayor and councilmember Peralos for your efforts in seeing this project through. This is really a complicated project. This is really a complicated project, and I appreciate being able to sit down with representatives from the Sierra Club and the Autobahn Society to hear their point of view and their perspective regarding the environmental impact issues, and also to understand the mitigation that has been put in place by Boston Properties. I don't have any questions, but I do have a few comments I'd like to make. And, and that is that, you know, right now, you've, you've heard this, and my comments may be a little redundant, but I'm, I'm going to venture them anyway. This is a parking lot, and there are chemicals and contaminants from those cars that seep into the water and harm our environment currently. This project creates a buffer between the Guadalupe River and the building, which is an environmental benefit. I'm glad to hear that an arborist will be on site to help excavate this lot and pay attention to any potential tree roots that might be impacted. Furthermore, this project will help bring jobs closer to our residents, which is something we desperately need, and could even help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We know folks are driving from South San Jose or further away, Central Valley, all the way to Palo Alto or North San Jose. We need to densify our city so that we can change how people get from one place to another, and this development takes that into consideration and will accomplish that. Whether that means shortening automobile trips or removing automobile, automobile trips, this will help. One of the best environmental benefits that we can plan for is placing people next to jobs, and this project accomplishes that. Not to mention, it's not far from Diradon Station and a real transit hub that will benefit by, this property will benefit by its location. Additionally, I'm heartened by the fact that this project will generate 4.3 million per year for the City of San Jose and 6.5 million per year for the San Jose Unified School District. That's based on property taxes. And as, you know, you've all heard me say this before, 14-year school board member, I know the school district can spend that money well, and I know the city will be able to spend that money well, too, all to the benefit of our residents. It also goes, needs to be stated again that the number of construction jobs that we'll see are nearly 2,000. The nearly permanent jobs of 6,400 is an incredible amount of jobs that we will see in the City of San Jose, and jobs are one thing we need to, to create a balance between jobs and housing. I know this project doesn't make everyone happy. I truly appreciate the time that James Eggers and Shawnee Kleinhaus spent with me reviewing the Autobahn Society and Sierra Club's perspective. And unfortunately, I hate to disagree with them on an issue and vote on the other side of an environmental issue, but I, I feel I must. And as co-author of this memo, you know where I stand on that issue. So I do appreciate all the organizations involved, and I appreciate that the city will continue to be involved along with the developer in making sure that the impact to the Guadalupe is negatively affected and that we will be able to benefit from the public space. So with that, I am happy to support the memo going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralos?
Yeah, really quick last words. Thank you very much for the, the input. I just wanted to make two quick points. Number one, this is absolutely not precedent-setting, and I, I will echo the comments from my colleagues that have already said it. We take on these projects one by one, and this absolutely has very unique circumstances. When we have, you know, the, the space, even if we're looking at a paved parking lot next to a waterway, it's going to be in our best interest to try to, to set it back as much as possible, and I think that we all feel that same way. And so in that sense, at least to those that were concerned, especially from our environmental advocates, this is not precedent-setting. And number two, at least until the end of my term in office, I will make sure that our environmental groups that have participated, as we looped them in with Boston Properties years ago, we will continue to ensure that they're going to participate with us through this mitigation process. And then obviously, we have the processes through committee as, as I'm gone to be able to ensure that that continues as well. So thank you again to, to my colleagues for your input.
Thank you, councilmember. I think it's also worth saying, addition, that it's not just, it's not precedent-setting. It's also not any compromise or violation of our existing policy. It's entirely consistent with our existing policy. And I know I've had these conversations back and forth with several leading advocates in the environmental community who point to several different documents. And I guess what, what I want to say, I've, I've read the 2016 policy, I've read the 1999 study, I've read the general plan, since I was the chair of the General Plan Task Force, what was it, more than a decade ago? And I still can't understand why there's a belief that this is somehow inconsistent with our existing policy, because I can point to a whole lot of provisions here, particularly in paragraph two of the 2016 policy, that talks about when a reduced setback can be considered. And its development's okay within the boundaries of the downtown. It's also sites with unique geometric characteristics, disproportionately long riparian frontages in relation to the width of the setback, sites being redeveloped with uses that may have significantly less environmental impacts. We consider all the, the car traffic on this site now, the extent to which meeting the required setback result in denial of economically viable use of the land. And in any event, I can go on and on, but all of these are outlined in the policy. There's clear, there's clear allowances in the policy for reduced setbacks. We don't make it a pattern to reduce setbacks in this city, but we do in the downtown, because downtowns are unique, and as far as I know, every city in the country makes a unique exemption for the downtown, and we do it in the policy. What I know is confusing is a lot of folks are pointing at the 1999 study, and they go to the general plan, and the general plan obviously makes reference to the 99 study because it was written before the 2016 policy came out. I, I understand that staff has made it clear that the 2016 policy supersedes the 1999 study. At least that's what it says in the, in the, in the staff report. And I, I think that's completely logical and makes complete sense, because you don't approve a change of policy 17 years later and say, well, we're still going to keep the old one. The problem is, the 2016 policy still contains within it, in the language at the very end, a reference to allowing people to use that 99 study as guidance. And I am hoping now that we're entertaining a general plan review as, when this comes back in the task force, we can have absolute clarity. So we no longer have the general, have a general plan that relates, that, that refers the reader back to this 21-year-old document that has since superseded, and we no longer have a policy that is the policy, was it three dash, I'm sorry, six dash 34? We no longer have a policy six dash 34 that refers back to other documents, but merely we have a policy that contains within it everything that's one, someone should know when they're trying to evaluate whether or not a site is compliant with our riparian ambitions. So is that something that is, that's reasonable to expect in the months ahead as we're, as we're working through the general plan update?
And I'll, I'll accept it as a friendly amendment as an addition, because I think the clarity will be really important to have. So if that's something we can add in, I'd love to.
Yeah, that's perfectly reasonable, man.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the amendment. I'll stop, I'll get off my high horse now. Okay, so we have a motion, and I know that Councilman Jimenez is on remotely. Did he have a hand up? No. Okay, let's vote then on the motion.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Aye.
Mayhann?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, don't leave just yet. We have, I believe, open forum at this time.
I do, I have 10 people in person so far.
Okay.
So I'll start with the in-person. I'll call three names if you want to come down to the microphone. Sheena Madon, Sandeep Madon, and Barat.
Okay. And I'm going to offer, since we have about 100 folks attending, oh, it's down to 83 now, and I know we're going to have a break at 6 o'clock, I'm going to limit public comment to one minute, because I have a feeling we're going to have a lot of folks offering public comment. So welcome, everyone, to please offer their public comment this time.
Okay, so when you get to the microphone, please state the name that you put on the card, so I can just mark the card off. So I have Sheena Madon, Sandeep Madon, and Barat to begin with. Go ahead.
Welcome.
I'm Sheena Madon. In March, Mayor Liccardo and several councilmembers recommended to the city manager that unhoused people should not be located near child-sensitive areas. You seem to agree we should minimize these types of interactions, but last week, councilmember Cohen and the city manager with Mayor Liccardo's support relocated part of an encampment to two feet away from our local playground park, catty corner from a busy soccer park, and close to a daycare in a dense residential neighborhood with lots of young families. Other sites were disqualified for location and adjacent land use reasons. Why didn't you immediately disqualify 71 Vista Montana? After location was published, homeless people who are not part of the program or bound to any code of conduct agreement have begun arriving in our neighborhood. As a disturbing preview, one of them had an unleashed pit bull, and I found a needle that they left 100 yards away from my house on the sidewalk we take to our playground multiple times every week.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker. I also have Maribel, please come down, and Ophelia. Go ahead.
Do you see the timer?
Yes, go ahead.
I can't see the timer.
No, the, you'll see the timer on the podium.
So, Honorable Mayor, can we request two minutes? Because the other public forum members got two minutes, at least for the people who are here.
I, I'm sorry, sir. Everyone is subjected to the same time limit.
Sorry, what was that?
Everyone's subjected to the same time constraint, sir.
Yeah, but the other public forum speakers got two minutes.
Sir, your time is ticking.
Essentially, I'm the elected president of our homeowners association. I would like to notify that the city did not notify us, and however, the city notified everyone else and the contractors who worked on the site, the nonprofit, and so on and so forth. The only reason we came to know was because 50 of us actually filed, called actually the city office, and that's how we know. So why were we not notified? And that's one. There's a second item that I would like to speak about is kid safety. So this is something we had a concern, and just three days back, I was there, a few days back, I was there with my family and lot of kids, and the RV just came, a vehicle came out and just jumped the red light, and that's a concern that I would really like to highlight. The last one is about contamination. So we know that there's a memorandum from Kim Walsh to the Honorable Mayor and the city council saying there's high levels of arsenic and lead, et cetera, present there. So whether homeless notified, the contractors notified, and others notified, that's something we'd like to ask, and we'd like the council.
Thank you. Next speaker. If you could please state the name that you put on the card, so I could mark you off. Go ahead.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Sandeep Madon. This honorable council has good intentions in setting up the homeless RV park in our San Jose area, but could hardly do so in a worse way. A good council, including one with progressive outlook that we share, should be focused on lifting underprivileged people up, not pulling neighborhoods down, as is the case here. What you intend as a temporary emergency measure is likely to remain indefinitely, with court injunctions obtained by lawyers on behalf of RV owners who are against ever moving out from here. Recall how hard it has been for San Jose and other cities like Mountain View to remove squatter encampments, leave alone something where you have actually allowed these RVs to move in, even if you call it temporary. The irony is that in the 20 or so, RV occupants gain very little by being shoehorned here, while we face immense uncertainty and anxiety caused by...
Thank you. The next speaker could come forward. I also would like to call, I'm not, the handwriting looks like Sutras, Autre, and Rejma. If you could head down towards the microphone as well, go ahead.
Ready? Okay. I lived in East San Jose for 44 years. I was addicted to meth, incarcerated, former homeless resident that slept on the floor of Fifth Street Church with my children. I have 22 years clean and sober. I'm a drug and alcohol counselor with five AAs, a bachelor's in arts and social work, and grad school with title four E student with an emphasis in child welfare. I was part of the crew that worked in the jungle for 35 days, worked as an outreach case manager for the Bill Wilson Center. One year ago, for the first time in my life, I was given an opportunity to live in a beautiful, beautiful community known as California Impressions. For the first time in my life, I felt safe. My children were safe from a life that can feel so intimidating. On September 7th, that was taken from me. My guard went back up, and I felt like what I fought so hard to escape was put right back at my doorstep. Shame on the city for making this rash decision next to a child's park and for not notifying all residents. This was not thought through very well, and believe me, it shows. City of San Jose, David Cohen, shame on you.
Okay, next speaker.
My name is Maribel Montagnas. Thank you. Regarding 71 Vista Montana, the experimental pilot safe parking site, our Vista Montana and Renaissance Drive neighborhood was left out of the process. Yet, the city engaged with all special interests, including Apple, Home First, and its contractors. There have been an array of problems. Most egregiously, housing people on a site the city is fully aware is contaminated with arsenic. We need your help to terminate this experiment in our neighborhood and with human lives of the unhoused. Two solutions: we hope you will direct policy for the city that when, that when proposed, projects like this should be bound to the city's noticing requirements, and a policy that places a 500-foot barrier from children's playgrounds, parks, schools, and residences. I leave you with this: the homeless and neighborhoods are now a commodity in a multi-billion-dollar business called homelessness.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also would like to call down Shweta and Lubna.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and the councilmembers. This is just one, another egregious example of how North San Jose had continuously been neglected, neglected by the City of San Jose. The fact of the matter is that we are a tiny little corner of San Jose which has been continuously used by the, as a taxpayer base and nothing else. As the councilman, Mr. Cohen admitted during our public meeting, that North San Jose is the last in terms of the response time for police reports, and this is going to continue unless the City of San Jose decides to pay more attention to the taxpayer base of North San Jose, which is just a tiny little corner which has been continuously ignored over the last 25 years that I have stayed there. Thank you.
Next speaker. Also would like to call down Khalid.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and city councilmembers. My name is Rejma, a San Jose resident by the 77 Vista Montana encampment site. We want to know, I have a lot of questions, so we want to know why the residents that are affected were not notified and decision was taken in a rush. Was it a real emergency? We were told by city council David Cohen that this is an experiment. A pilot of this nature should not be conducted in a densely populated residential neighborhood near parks, especially not rushing through the plan without engaging the neighborhood. Why was this handled by the city's Emergency Operations Center, EOC? What are the guidelines for invoking these protocols? My understanding is that the city council was not fully involved in this. When did the city first become aware that Apple wanted the encampment of its land? At that point, why did the city not proactively identify and prepare a site, given the number of unhoused people all over the city? It seemed like this was a false emergency.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down somebody who has Verdigree on their card with no name, and then the last speaker also has no name. Go ahead.
Since the city abruptly decided to move a part of an unhoused encampment without any communication right next to our children's parks and in the middle of a thick residential neighborhood, our evening park trips have had to be discontinued, much to the disappointment of my child, who had just started enjoying being at parks, playing with her friends after over a year of being forced to isolate due to the pandemic. Trust me, I feel a lot of empathy for the homeless who've had to move from one place to another for lack of permanent solutions. They don't have a choice, but I'm sure a prolific city like San Jose, with all the collective resources and intellect, can come up with more permanent solutions. Why should I be concerned for my child's safety after this development? Ask other cities who follow the policy of not having such encampments within 500 feet of children's parks and residential houses. Mayor Sam Liccardo, in his memorandum dated March 18, 2021, also recommends not relocating such encampments in children-sensitive areas. As others have noted, we are already seeing activities in this past week that supports my concerns. The city's...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Cohen admitted, this area has been the worst response time in San Jose. I repeat, worst response time. I am proud to say he represents us. I'm sure everyone in the room is smart enough to know what homeless brings in, and there's tons of data for it. So what are you experimenting? How worse your services can underperform, so you can further learn and neglect your community? People voted for you, and taxpayers? Cohen also mentioned there are others who voted on this proposal. I'm sure all those folks are sitting in here. So what do you want to experiment? On the lives of our community? How can it be next to your park, and then you can determine that it's safe? That's the question I'm asking all of you. Isn't it the first reason to be rejected for that space? Why has it not been done? We need answers. We need transparency.
Thank you. I received another card for Prateek Kunsal, so please come down.
I am resident of California Impressions Community, which is next to the new RV safe parking site. This site is next to the large residential area and two kids' park and playground. I am concerned about the security and safety of the kids and the residents who are in that neighborhood. That neighborhood currently have issues with lack of police and city support. There have been many incidents like thefts, illegal parking, substance use, et cetera, and with the new safe site, we are expecting there would be, there would be even more such kind of concerns. We walk with the kids, family, and dogs around that neighborhood day and night. With the new site in the place, it will be very hard for us to walk with kids and our family in the dark. City is saying it's an experiment. So what are you trying to get out of that experiment? What if that experiment fails? I am deeply concerned about the long-term increase in crime.
Thank you. I've called, I've called all the cards, so I see a couple people are making their way down. Can you just, when you get to the microphone, let me know who you are, so I can check off your card. Go ahead.
I'm Lubna Sal, and I'm here tonight to come with this request to you all to consider that a city which receives a whole lot from our high-tech neighbors makes a memo decision to treat the most vulnerable with the least empathy. Didn't the city know that the people around Orchard Drive had to be reinstated, or were they caught by surprise just like us, when you moved them to our neighborhood without any notice? Do you repay back the generosity of Apple, of Google, PayPal, and Cisco by bringing the core problem back to them when they're helping you to fix it? Keep in mind, these cars and RVs can park in their private properties, and towing is not an option there, because these are people's homes. Show...
Hi, my name is Khalid Sabzari. I am also a resident of California Impressions. The parking of the 71 Vista Montana building parking is a not-right place for the homeless people. Community came to know about it by surprise. So clearly, it was not announced and was not handled correctly. You will lose faith by doing that. City needs better solution and better treatment for homeless people. Councilmember David Cohen, you yourself said, each RV owner needs to sign a strict code of conduct. Any violation will cause them to be expelled. Do you see a problem with this statement? Are you saying any violation will make them homeless again? Where are you going to put them then? You still need to take care of them. Why not facilitate for them, place suitable for them from the beginning, and have a programs to rehabilitate them? I think better treatment needed for homeless people, and better treatment needed for community...
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to Zoom. Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks for the meeting today. I hope we can clear up the consent calendar situation in the future. You know, this issue sounds like city governments worked pretty well with Apple, I think, to really address the needs of, you know, finding help for homeless, but they didn't address certain parts of the community, which, you know, we just need to work on that, those ideas. That's our better democratic future. You worked on two or three parts of it, not the final important part. Good luck how to do this better in the future. Good luck with complete streets work for the King Road area, and what can be open public policy, private policies, privacy policies, and just good practices. And good luck to, I hope we can respect Gavin Newsom can hopefully win as governor at this time, and, and we can set a course for next year to be a regular election time for all of us. Thank you.
Rollin'.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I want to very, my clock is not working. I want to very bring to your attention a meeting that the VTA will be holding at the convention to center next week. They're gonna cram upwards of 300 people in the ballroom. Initially, they did not know about the ordinance that required proof of vaccination. That was addressed last Friday. They've now come back with an extension for medical and religious. And the bottom line is that we're looking at a super-spreader event in the making, and I'm asking that you as both members make it possible for SBEs who have immunodeficiencies to attend this meeting remotely, just like the High Speed Rail Authority, and make this possible for events in the Central Valley. Thank you.
Paul Soto.
Yeah, this ain't on Cohen. This ain't on Cohen at all. You know what this is on, what the homeless issue is on? 25%. We have never broken that threshold of 25% of low-income housing has been consistent for six years, while at the same time, from 2016 till now, 95 to 115% of market-rate housing has been built. That disparity right there is the shameful reality for what exists on the streets today, because this council, especially Licardo, Davis, and Peralas, you have neglected the issue, and now you want to put this on Cohen? This ain't his issue. This is yours. Why? Because the majority of the market-rate housing that I just quoted are going up in District 3. So this is on you, Peralas. You give more attention to all of these buildings in my body than you will to the people that are being affected by that.
Alma Goldstein.
Yes, good, good afternoon, Mayor Licardo and the city members. I'm a 25-year resident of San Jose, taxpaying, and I am impressed as well as disgusted with what I've heard this afternoon. It seems that the city of San Jose cares more about the people that are building as opposed to the residents. We have been placed in a secure, you've targeted our community for the homeless. You've created a parking lot that keeps the home 10 to 20 people safe inside a fenced area, and yet the residents outside of that, that area are not secured. More homeless people are now coming to the outside of that area, and you're not providing security. Plus, the arsenic levels on that site you knew about. Shame on you for putting homeless people on a highly toxic site. I cannot believe that you would do that, and I'm highly disgusted with that, your behavior. Thank you.
Joseph Lee. Joseph.
Hello. Hi, I'm the dad with a six-years-old kid living in the local neighborhood nearby the homeless RV site at the 71 Vista Montana. So a couple of years ago, when we looked for a house, we did not choose Mupita, Santa Clara, or Fremont, but San Jose was simply because we believed that city will bring us a safe living environment. Like most of us, we have to work so hard and fight for the life each day, just for paying the mortgage and education in order to risk kids living in the area. Our life is never easy. With the recent incident that city relocated homeless RV site right next to the kids' park without any official informing and dialogue with us, that really makes me worry and wonder if I made a wrong decision. So my question to the city is that, per city council member, this is emergency plan, but then claim this is also experiment. And I would say, if it's experiment, it's about people's life. It's gonna be well-planned ahead. So if the city ever did any thorough research before making decision, and why is next to the kids' park? So I hope we can have their...
Sylvia.
Hi, good evening, everybody. This is with respect to 71 Vista Montana RV Safe Parking Site. Councilman Cohen, the worst thing about being lied to is knowing you weren't worth the truth, and that's how you have made us feel by not including us in the process. We will not sit back and take everything you throw at us. We will fight back with all our strength. If you think that this pilot project is your career-defining move, you're wrong. If we elect the same correct politicians every time, then that's a very clear message that we don't want a change. All the policymakers, politicians who have signed on the dotted line to push this ill-thought social experiment on my neighborhood, let me tell you this: you all are risking getting re-elected. Politicians like you and diapers have only one thing in common. They should be changed regularly for the same reason.
Shrinah. Shrinah.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo and the council. I'm angry that the city didn't factor our inputs during the decision-making process. Questions such as, how will you enforce the code of conduct? Are you screening the residents, the residents of the RV, safe RV parking site for the security of the neighborhood? And most importantly, who is accountable for the security, who is accountable if there are any security violations? I would like to ask you, what type of democracy do you want? One where all voices matter, or where only voices that favor you matter? If it's the former, let us work together on reevaluating this bad decision. Thank you.
Vicki.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm here to voice up in regard to the homeless RV parking site at 71 Vista Montana. I'm a mother of a six-year-old child. I'm surrounded by residents with small kids. All of us work very, very hard every day to make a living, to keep our children safe, to keep our homes safe. When Councilman Mr. Cohen made a decision to place the homeless RV parking site in my neighborhood, a condensed residential area, right next to two parks, one serving toddlers, without any prior notification to a local residence, I feel that the trust I have for the government has been destroyed, and I do not feel safe at home. We would like to consider the government to immediately consider moving the homeless RV site to a non-residential area, away from children-serving facilities, as Mayor Licardo memo indicated, with proper facilities and service to the RV residents. Thank you.
Vahini.
Hi, I'm Vahini, and I live here next to Vista Montana, 71 Vista Montana, where the RV parking site has been decided. Councilman Cohen, we spoke to you, we requested you that this is not the right place. On Friday on September 3rd, you did not listen to us. You just bated a fear. You just finished the checkmark of being visiting the people. We are not that residents. We are hard-working taxpayers, and we need the answers which we have been asking you since we heard that why this place has been chosen, and this is not the right place. If you think it is the right place, that's wrong. We have to be part of the decision-making. I lost the whole trust on the government. I am a hard-working person. My family is here, and we are contributing to the economy, and we are contributing to the future of the great United States of America. Let us focus on that, not these things. You please take care of these things. Thank you.
Thomas.
Yeah, so I thought I had two minutes. I prepared something for two minutes. Apparently you want to suppress our speech. I get that. It's what you guys have been doing all along. So I wrote a social media post, and I'm spreading it internationally, and I'm gonna bring international spotlight upon this situation. I'm calling it Silicon Valley's Guantanamo Bay, and I'm comparing what Guantanamo Bay, or Gitmo, what their conditions are like compared to what you guys put in our backyard here. So let's, let's compare. Gitmo has a tall cyclone fence topped with razor wire. Guess what? So does your camp. Gitmo, you can only get there via, get through it by guard, same as your, your place. 24/7 surveillance. Gitmo is the same with your camp. The residents spend 95% of their time indoors. Here's where it gets worse. Gitmo at least has indoor plumbing, the encampment does not. Their, Gitmo has air conditioning, your camp does not. Worst of all, Gitmo doesn't have toxic waste like your campsite does. You guys, we're not giving up. We're gonna bring international spotlight on this. It's your Git...
Breeze. I'm not sure if I'm saying the name right.
Hello. What is the city of San Jose doing to make sure our neighborhood is safe? Cohen and the city of San Jose need help with making a concrete, sustainable, key word, sustainable, plan for the homeless, since you have failed miserably with your current plan. You listen to us. You want us to be your eyes and your ears, right, Mr. Cohen? Well, here we are, telling you that your plan is not working. Stop experimenting with our young children and our families. Go experiment on your own children and all of your own families. Cohen, you need to step down if you cannot discuss the plans with your constituency. We are a united community. We will stick together, and we will not stop protesting this awful situation that you brought to our damn neighborhood, and nobody wants that here. You need a place with services, and you have nothing here for that.
Sugana.
Hi, yes. So I also live close to 71 Vista Montana. I work hard. I save up so that I can live in a safe neighborhood, not be part of an experiment. With this decision made in secrecy, you have opened up our neighborhood to the general homeless, who are already littering, leaving things behind, making it scary for the rest of the young families with kids who are here. On top of that, there's been a precedence of fires in other encampments, and I hate to think what would happen if one such thing started in our already dense neighborhood. In short, your short-term decision to not involve the taxpaying, hard-working community, who by the way also put Cohen in office, will result in long-term damage. We'd like to be part of the solution. We need the site to be moved to a more viable site with wraparound services that's sustainable, as others have already spoken about, and we really need this to be not done in secrecy.
Nick.
Hi. My parents have had a home in the community neighboring the safe parking site for 25 years now. Firstly, I'd like to say we feel betrayed by the city. We were left in the dark. From the day the decision was made to make this an RV park, till the fence was put up, there was a gap. Notice, no one told us anything. Since the fence was put up, till Councilman Cohen addressed us, there was a gap. No one told us anything. This is wrong. If the city officials knew, we should have known. I'm not happy with Councilman Cohen for treating us this way. He should have been transparent. Now I want to draw your attention to the location. I just want you all to go to Google Maps and search for 71 Vista Montana. It's in, it's in between two parks and thousands of homes. There's literally a one-foot-wide wall separating a kids' park and RVs. We already saw a needle on the sidewalk, questionable activities, and a bunch of garbage. What's the precedent we're setting here in San Jose for such projects? Is it okay if they destroy communities and are dangerous to kids? Right now, it looks like it is okay. Please stop this. We're all for helping the homeless, but the manner in which this project was executed doesn't do justice by the homeless, the residents, or the kids living in this area. We love San Jose, and we want to continue.
Tessa.
Okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, there's a problem that we only have one minute. Thank you, those other people. And in addition, I did lose my chance to comment on, and I'd like two minutes again, like Blair got, in regards to the calendar that you missed, you know, because I have a comment on that airport thing. So I would like two minutes after that, Mayor Licardo. And in terms of this, we need to fight together, everybody who's listening to me. I'm Tessa Woodman-C, cleanairsj@gmail.com. Clean air, like we don't have in our city. Cleanairsj@gmail.com. And we need to get together and change our charter, so we can have 1,000 people to override the government the way it is, because they're not doing a good job. We have been hurt by putting a five-story hotel in our neighborhood. We have been hurt by putting a five-story hotel in our neighborhood where we didn't get notified either when they made the general plan change to grab our lands, to financialize our lands, to make money and profit from our lands. Instead of like they did when they took it away from the Native Americans and cut off their head for five dollars. Same thing. They're destroying our property, destroying us. We need to.
Keet.
Hi. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
To the mayor and the city members, the fate that we placed new as residents of San Jose has been lost with this move to open a safe parking site for RVs in a densely populated residential neighborhood at seventy-one Vista Montana. We're seeking answers to questions that we should have had a chance to ask before this move was placed, moved place RVs was even thought of. What constituted the emergency that required these occupants of the Apple encampment to be rushed in and placed here? Would we as residents of this neighborhood be privy to the details of this decision? While homelessness is a situation that we all empathize with, creating a parking site for these inhabitants in an area that's right next to a children's park does not inspire confidence. In fact, it terrifies me. The area is already dealing with increased break-ins, pofts and other petty crimes. And the response time of San Jose PD is already strained. This adds to the growing list of concerns for safety in the neighborhood, not to mention parking issues. Even event days have the streets lined with cars. Who do we turn to if there's?
Marali.
Yeah, hi. So I'm talking about the seventy-one Vista Montana. Thank you, Mayor Licardo and council members. So I have two-pronged questions. One, have any of you ever visited our neighborhood? Any day you come in, you would definitely see illegal parking. You will see broken bottles, beer bottles. And in the night, the first hand, I have seen, you know, broken beer bottles and everything. And people come in and sit in and drinking in our neighborhoods. Okay? And the second part is that, you know, and, and thefts and, you know, hit and runs and not addressed by police. Second part is that I have sent questions on what criteria was used? What other sites are assessed for this purpose? And I have not gotten an answer. Do we have a policy? You know, how, what, how to choose a encampment site? And I haven't heard anything. Okay, if you don't have a policy, when are we going to frame that policy? Yeah, thank you.
Gail.
Hello? Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, this is Gail Osner. I just wanted to thank two very, very hardworking council aides, Lamb and David's, I'm sorry, I'm Chief of Staff. They, she, they've worked so hard out there. I've been involved with these folks for years. These are wonderful human beings. They want to keep things at peace. Right now, there's only one unhoused person, a senior, living there at the RV park. And he's been out there cleaning, making sure everything's clean around the area. These are wonderful human beings and they want to work with the neighbors. I've talked to a couple protesters. If and when things settle down, I am going to be setting up a meeting with the residents once they move in and some of the protesters, because they need to know what a great family this is.
Okay, while I call the next person on Zoom, I have a person, someone in person who submitted a card. So make your way down, Giyung. And on Zoom, Pashant, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm talking in regards to seventy-one Vista Montana. I understand that council member David Cohen said it's an emergency, but we do know that they have been working for a long time with Apple. So how do you count this as an emergency while you have been working with Apple for so long to figure out what the solutions are? Plus, you, you mentioned about emergency situations where we could contact police. I myself have two cases open with your department and more than four years now and nobody has responded. Hit and run cases, police cops tell us that if you're not dead, handle it on your own. So how can we trust you? We do not want this next to our kids' park. My, my kid has been crying every day to go to the park, but I'm not able to take him to the park just because you have an homeless site right next to it. We have a car parked over there, broken windows without a license plate. Come and visit it, it's still there. Neighborhoods, businesses are everywhere are against this. We have a petition with more than thousand signatures and we are not going to stop until we have this taken care properly. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I am very nervous. So please pardon me if I shake a little bit. Please, Mr. Cohen, you created an emergency for twenty people, but it resulted in three thousand five hundred people's emergency for nine months. Do you ever do that calculation? That's first question. Number two, in this memo sent by the deputy city manager, there is a phrase here using an EOC approach. Now, Mr. Cohen told this was an emergency. EOC, was EOM ever involved in making this decision? And also this pilot site, was it an EOC or was it an EOC approach? There is a big distinction here. What's, what's being done here is you, you guys think we are ignorant? Not be able to tell the difference between an EOC and EOC approach.
Thank you. Nagash.
Renaissance neighborhood as well. Councilman Cohen's experiment at seventy-one Vista Montana, as you can see, has created a lot of fear and uncertainty for the entire neighborhood of thousands of residents. We fear if we are ever be able to take our kids to play in the neighborhood park. We are uncertain about the future of the neighborhood, that this is a slippery slope that you've led us to. And the, the safety and security of the neighborhood is at risk. All of this because we were completely left out of the process. We're completely in the dark about why this was decided, how it was decided and what's going to be in place for us in the future. Is this how you will govern the city? By alienating families and taxpayers? Please reconsider this experiment and take it elsewhere. Thank you.
Caller nine-nine-two-zero. Caller nine-nine-two-zero, please press star six.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please mute your.
There's a lot of, sorry, there's a lot of. Uh, okay, give me a second. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, all right. I live in a close neighborhood, Rivermark, which is only five minutes away from the situation. And I really like the neighborhood. It is convenient, clean and safe. My kid goes to the soccer field in the park next to the seventy-one Vista Montana most of the time. And he really likes to hang out with his friends over the weekend over there, where they can play football, basketball, soccer and just hang out there. And as among a young kid, I always feel safe to let him do that, especially after a very stressful work week. I need time of my own. Knowing my kid can be out there safe and have a great social life, just make me relax. Or now, things changed. I guess I'm okay if there's a consensus and if there's an open process to get me prepared for that, but it is not. The city passes it an emergency without giving us time to react and get prepared. We were all blindsided. I wonder if this is how the city designs the future, then what else can be coming? I really hope that you will reconsider this. There should be better places, not close to the park where the youngest are playing, playing and having great.
Shree.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm talking about regarding seventy-one Vista Montana. Um, this is a very densely populated area with seven communities. And we already have too many problems created by the city. We have four high-rise apartment complexes without a parking plan. Apartment residence park in the middle of the road, blocking traffic to load unload items. Too many cars are parked along the streets causing blind spots to merge from our communities. I've seen drugs and prostitution in this parked vehicle and there's no point in calling the cops as they hardly come. All the mature trees were cut and we are left with dry trees that cause allergies and fire hazard. And the site has dry trees right near the RV. City should find a better place and solution for the homeless. I, I see all of our neighbors are united right now and they will fight this.
Brian.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have to say, I like the idea of a RV park for people. But I went out and rode in several cities, several parts of the city, there's RVs that are broken down, RVs that are. And I feel for the people, I've actually had people who were unhoused, lived with me until my lease, I couldn't do it anymore. Otherwise I would be out in the street. It is the lack of communication, that's what we're hearing here. And that's true with all aspects of interacting with the city. There's a lack of communication and there's definitely a lack of respect. I'm trying to understand why constituents are viewed with utter contempt. I do not understand that. Um, if you cannot treat us in a way different than that, maybe you should step down. I can tell you, I have never said this before and I'm starting to see what people are talking about. Thank you.
Krishna.
Hey. Resident council, mayor and officials. I have a simple question regarding this. Do you take responsibility for any tragic event that could happen if this experiment fails? For example, a child being run over by someone running a red light? Let's pause. I'll, I'll pause for few seconds. Let you think about this.
Okay.
I request all of you to, I'm, 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 my silence, I'm talking with silence here. I request all of you to take a pen and sign, yes, I am responsible for any such event document. And please make it available for the public. By the way, the example I mentioned has already happened. We have, we have a video of a guy coming out of this place and running a red light. Luckily, there was no kid in the crosswalk.
Balakrishna. Balakrishna Katha. Okay, I'm going to move on to Rizani.
Hi, I'm a homeowner and I live next to seventy-one Vista Montana. Our neighborhood is not against the homeless. We want to be part of the solution. Unfortunately, city did not involve or notify us before making the decision and then they made the decision behind the closed doors. This already overcrowded residential neighborhood is not a right place to open a safe parking site for homeless. I request city to consider taking this site to a better and safe place for homeless where they can have wraparound services, showers, you know, water facilities, et cetera. Putting them in an empty lot is not enough without providing them, providing them basic facilities. I urge city to do the human thing and treat them as humans by providing them a sustainable place with better facilities instead of shifting them from one place to another place. Thank you.
Gal.
Hello, everyone. I'm a resident at the Renaissance neighborhood and I'm in opposition to the RV parking site at seventy-one Vista Montana. Uh, I'd like to reiterate that our community shares the same sentiment with me that we're not against the homeless folks that are gathered in the parking lot, but we're very much against the city's decision to place them in our densely populated neighborhood. Uh, we raised our concerns and we will continue to do so. And there are several unanswered questions at this point. And this really shows the lack of planning around this experiment. This is wrong and we request the city to relocate this program to a better location. Thanks for listening to us and thanks for your time.
Karthik.
Hi. My name is Shretha and we live in the neighborhood of seventy-one Vista Montana. We as residents of this neighborhood feel being kept in dark about this new policy. Nothing regarding them seems like an experiment. This experiment is proving to create more havoc than expected due to just one reason, lack of communication. How do we trust anything being conveyed by council member David Cohen when they kept us in the dark for this long? We have experienced thefts, issues with parking, and we have reported it multiple times in the past, but the police did not help us. We got scripted responses, but no action was taken. How do we ensure safety and security of residents? The city says there's twenty-four-hour security and other safety protocols will be followed for people living here. But this same city has failed us before many times when there have been security concerns. Why should we trust them? How can we trust them? This is not a matter of putting temporary bandage. Let's be a part of a solution. Thank you.
Neil.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we all agree that we need to help homeless people, but not in this way. As you see from people's anger, your decision already caused quite some troubles. So residents near the neighborhood, they show the safety concerns and this will significantly impact the homeowner's property value. You're trying to solve homeless problem by sacrificing the nearby residents' benefits. And this is a shame. If you want to experiment without communication, why not near the city hall or your own neighborhood? This decision already creates a stress and tension between your local residents and homeless people. You spend taxpayers' money, but not helping either sides. It actually showed a broken decision-making process and ignorance of the city council, especially when similar situations happen in other cities. So please address this issue properly as it seriously disturbed the local residents, homeless people and both sides' trust to the city council.
Balakrishna Katha.
Hi. Good, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am Balakrishna Katha. I have three kids and I'm living in the California Renaissance community for almost seven to eight years. I am concerned more about the kid's safety. My kids always go to the park, which is very close to us, and we just play there. And this Vista Montana, seventy-one Vista Montana was next to the park. That's a big safety concern for us. And other question is when, uh, when the city of San Jose already have homeless encampments like Seven Trees, where there is a news in twenty nineteen that it was not safe and with, has gun shootings and everything. Why is now, why is this now a pilot? And it's, it's experimented at our neighborhood where it's densely populated. I think the win-win situation should be an RV park where all the facilities are there for the.
Justin. Justin.
Hi, yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so my question regarding the temporary RV site, seventy-one Vista Montana, is that if the city had a very limited option in finding a site for the RV parking, saying that they don't own, the other properties they own is not suitable. Uh, I wonder if by the end of this experiment, which is nine months later, the city will be able to purchase more land for these RV parking. But I don't, I, I, I'm questionable about that. So what's going to happen, happen in nine months? My worry is that the program might be extended. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Bobby.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and council member. Um, I'm a resident close to seventy-one Vista Montana RV park. Uh, recently we came to know that council member David Cohen decided to move the RV homeless parking, which is close to our residential area. So in our residential, residential community, we have a lot of small kids and they have been continuously using the park. And now that of the pandemic, things have opened up. We and kids are looking forward to using the park regularly. But now with the homeless people moving close to the park, I don't feel safe to take my kids to the park. There are a lot of safety concerns. Is it worth risking kids' safety by putting this RV park close to the, the community and the residential area? Already we are dealing with other issues like package theft and car break-ins added to this is this additional problem. I would like the council members to reconsider moving the park five hundred feet away from the kids' park. We are not against the homeless people, but we are against the city's sudden decision to move them close to the kids' park. Thank you.
Vahini.
Hello. Hi, uh, so I'm Vahini. I, I'm, I want to check whether the councilman Cohen is listening to all these concerns because he was listening to all the concerns on September third and he did what he wanted to do. That's not what great leaders do. They fix their problems. Councilman Cohen, fix it. This is not the right neighborhood. Seventy-one Vista Montana. 71 Vista Montana is not the right neighborhood for this RV park. This is not a safe parking site for them or for the residents. You involved us in this experiment without our consent, this is not right thing to do. Fix it. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Thank you, I want to thank the many members of the community who came to speak and who spoke on Zoom and waited patiently until the end of our meeting to view their very strongly held beliefs. I hear very clearly and I think my colleagues do as well, the intense frustration of the community. I appreciate that this is a very difficult situation. And I have been told, our latest report from our staff is that there are currently two RVs on the site. I'm sorry, excuse me, two automobiles, six RVs on the site and one person who is living there. There will be no more than 20 people who will be allowed to live on that site. I appreciate the concerns and frustrations. These are not new to many of us here on this council because we are facing an epidemic of homelessness with thousands and thousands of homeless residents. I can tell you within a small number of blocks from my house, about five blocks, there will be a project that will be built for more than 300 formerly unhoused residents. So this is the reality, it's happening everywhere in our city because our unhoused residents need to be housed. I, I don't want to invest in this notion that it's somehow an experiment, although it is time limited, we're very clear about that. And we have represented the community, this is something we expect that will be for nine months. It's, it's not an experiment, we've actually had safe parking sites in other parts of the city. And we'll do everything we can to operate them safely in a way that's, in a way that does not conflict with the reasonable expectations of our residents who must live in the community. And we expect you will tell us very clearly if we have fallen short in any way. So we, I look forward to continuing this conversation and hearing from you in the days and weeks ahead. This meeting is adjourned.